The January 20th, 2021. Planning Board meeting, South Park Planning Board. Because we're, we'll start, everybody's got the agenda or have access to it. We'll start with a roll call vote, just because we're on Zoom, so we can see everybody. Make sure everybody's here. I'm gonna start with Jeff Minahan. Just saying, Jeff, Hershey Herskoff.
Here.
He's here.
Playing board. And I click on it.
I can't see.
Betsy Randall.
Here.
And Manley Go.
On.
Yeah, I'm here. That's, that's five, so we're a full house.
I remember I forwarded you an email about South Berwick forms.
Yeah.
Uh, can someone?
Who that is?
Yeah, can you mute? Is having offline discussion?
Yeah, the Crowley's need to mute their.
Sorry.
Computer until they're asked to talk.
Yeah, okay, alright, yeah, thank you. Okay, good enough. Alright, so, um, the next item is the review and approval of the minutes of the January 6th meeting.
Um, I, I would like to make a motion to put it off because I have some comments and they're sort of lengthy. And I'd rather deal with it directly with Amy if that's okay with everybody and then let her revise them and bring them back.
I'm okay with that.
Um, okay. Um.
Any objections to just putting them off for a bit till next meeting?
Uh, well, we would need to know what changes you're suggesting, which you could do next time.
Um, I just thought there were things that especially I said that were not represented, so I'd rather go through the, um, I'm gonna go through the Zoom meeting myself. I need to review it myself before I can tell Amy what I thought those were. And then she can send you a red, how about a red line copy if that works for everybody?
That'd be funny, because we should have a record of your comments if they're gonna result in changes to the.
They'll, they'll be represented in the revised minutes. How's that?
Is that okay with you, Amy?
Yes, yeah, anytime.
Alright, we'll table them for that, for that, for that process then. Okay. Okay. Um, keep coming. Alright, so, um, the next item is, are there people here? Uh, uh, that wish to speak on an item either on the agenda or not on the agenda? I recognize some faces. There's, we got, uh, yeah, David McDermott.
Yes, Bill, I'd like, I'd like to speak on one of the items. You guys keep freezing on me, but I believe you can hear me.
Yep. Uh, which item do you want to speak on, David? Which item would that be?
Um, that would be, uh, the five lot subdivision on Bennett Lot Road.
Okay, we'll wait till we get there. Okay, anybody else?
Yeah, Joe Dalator, I'd also like to speak on that same topic.
Okay, so noted. And I recognize some of the others who might be here for the, uh, we're gonna have it. Jack Krikis, the town council chair is gonna join us.
He was there.
For, um, uh, discussion about some of the marijuana issues in town. And so I recognize some of you may be interested in that. That'll be a open discussion pretty much. So, okay, good, thank you. Um. We have a couple of correspondences to enter into the record tonight. Not gonna read them, but they're, they're, they'll, they're posted on the website or will be posted on the website after tonight's meeting. Uh, one from Greg Zinser and others regarding, uh, medical marijuana issues. Several of them, and that will be relevant, I presume, for the discussion item later this evening. Uh, and then another one from, uh, Scott Landis and others relative to the CMP substation. Uh, proposal, which we haven't heard anything on in almost a year. So those are, those are in and into the record and will be available, uh, there. Okay?
Hey, Bill, can I ask a question?
Sure.
So, related to, um, we're gonna talk about the marijuana stuff, so I'm okay about putting Greg's letter off till discussion about that. But, um, Scott asked, Scott at all, because there were others on it, asked for a response from us. And I'm wondering if we're planning on crafting one or we're gonna wait till we get the CMP to discuss the letter or?
Well, it's, it's, it's an active case, uh, although it's inactive and, uh, uh, Amy requested of them, uh, the status, them CMP, uh, and they, uh, responded last week indicating that they're on indefinite hold. In terms of when they, uh, are gonna deal with it, if they're gonna deal with it. So, um, I have corresponded, um, with Scott as chairman of this board, um, and explained all of that. Explained the process and how the zoning ordinance works and ex parte communications and so forth. So they had, he had questions regarding, um, public process, public comment and so forth. So I, I personally, I'd be glad to send you my.
Would, would you, if, yeah, if there, if there's a letter to us and you respond to it, if you'd CC the board, that'd be great. Because then I wouldn't worry that we haven't responded to the letter.
Yeah, I'll, I'll do that. I'll do that.
That'd be great. Thanks, Phil. I appreciate that.
And I, I copied, I copied several people, but not the entire board, but with your interest, I'll certainly do that.
Sure.
Okay, yeah. We have to, we have to be a little careful because, uh, as it's, it's not a withdrawn thing and it's not active. But we, we can't, we can't speak ex parte about it. And I was talking about process with Scott, not so much the specifics of the proposal.
That, that's totally fine. That's great.
I'll do that.
I'm just glad we talked to him about the process. That's what I was concerned about.
Right, okay, yeah, and I, I, yes, thank you, and I'll, I'll send those emails out to everybody after tonight.
Fabulous.
Thank you, okay, great.
Excuse me, Chairman?
Yes.
Um, do we have a time limit in the zoning ordinance about withdrawing petitions or non-active?
I don't know.
They usually go six months. They usually go six months after you've said the application was complete, but we never even had a.
Yeah, they haven't, they haven't made complete, so I don't know when it becomes dormant or, or that's a, that's a reasonable question.
And I think it would be just reasonable for them when they come back that they just come in with a brand new application and everything. It makes sense.
Right, usually, uh, my experience is if they don't contact you or you reach out to them, the town sends them a letter and says, if we don't hear from you in 30 days, we're going to withdraw this application for inaction, basically.
Okay, well.
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead, Joe.
Just to go, basically that letter is saying that they're gonna be done for a while. Yeah. So that's basically their withdrawal of the application.
Yeah, if, if we do withdraw an application, then enough, it's, well, it's public record what was applied for, I suppose, but. The fact that it's not, uh, active anymore. I think we're heading that direction with them.
Do they have funds in escrow?
No, nothing.
Negative.
No, they, 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 they had a sketch plan review. We didn't accept it as complete. We had a bunch of questions for them and they never came back.
Is, is there some reason that makes you think they're not gonna come back later or?
You can.
The letter, the letter explains most of it.
Yeah, uh, I'll send, I'll also forward the letter, the correspondence that went back and forth between Amy and their representative.
That would be great. Thanks.
That's all part of the record. Okay, so I'll do that and then the Landis correspondence. Thank you. Yeah, good. Yeah, because there, there was interest on a lot of sides about that CMP proposal off of, off of Wilder Lane. So it's, uh, there's interest in it, and if it's gonna be tabled, it's gonna be tabled. Okay, good. Alright, thank you. Uh, the, uh, there's no new business, but we have a number of, uh, items under old business. Uh, and the first one is Hexagon Energy. Uh, and, um, um, David, uh, drafted, uh, findings of fact on that process, on that project. And I see Scott Remmers here. Um, you wanna go through those, David? I, I can, I can, uh, I can put them up on the screen if we need to, or do you have them?
I've got them in, I've got my staff report or my report to you right in front of them, so I can try and share that screen if you'd like. Hold on.
Yeah, please go, uh, do I have to give you permission or can you do it yourself?
Let's see.
Let's find out.
Oh, geez, now I don't know where I am.
Hold on. Uh, screen two. Can you see that? Not yet. I think Amy has to give him control. There it is, alright.
Okay, so I can't see it, but I can see my other screen that has it, so.
It's up.
At the very top, could you, could you see my cursor?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, what I did is I put together a project overview. Uh, I've been trying to add those to my staff reports, so it's easier for people 10 years from now to go back and see exactly what happened when, or at least, for the most part, they can go back and listen to tapes and everything too. Um, and what I did is like, I set this up and what the board should probably do is vote on all the findings of fact.
Right.
Um, and, um, what I did is, is I broke them out independently. We don't need to read the whole thing. We could just say, you know, internal vehicle circulation, vote on each one as they have gone through. And if any of the board members wants to, I, you can approve all of them and say Manley wants to discuss in detail item number three. The board can vote on everything except for the one that the board members want to speak on. If that makes sense?
Yep.
So, um, again, so right, uh, the first part of my report is the findings of fact. I go through and list all of the actual findings of fact. You can see that they're highlighted and numbered. Um, and these come straight out of the town's zoning ordinance, pedestrian circulation, preservation of landscaping. Um, and on each one, what I have done is I go through and here's the standard that needs to be met. And then I give a brief overview about how they do or do not meet that standard. And then, uh, you can either vote that it, the condition has or has not been achieved. And then I was gonna record each independent vote, again, just to tally, uh, the votes for everyone, so everyone knows exactly what we're talking about. After that, what I did is I went through, uh, at the bottom here. Sorry, we've got 19 different conditions that the board needs to go through, so I apologize. So what I did is I put together a list of conditional, uh, conditions, and I will jump in, that the applicants actually asked. Um, I put Hexagon Energy LLC, I believe it was, uh, throughout the document, and they would actually like that to be Knights Pond Road LLC. It's a minor change. I can make that, so I think the board could go through with the understanding that I'm gonna need to make some draft amendments to the document. But that's really more of a scripturiz error than, than any kind of a factual or textual issue. So I went through and, um, so if the board finds the application or approves the application, I put some suggested conditions of approval down here. Uh, again, there's a lot of Hexagon Energies listed in here. And apart from that, then a signature bar for, uh, for you, Bill. And, uh, I can answer questions on any one of those, but I, I, I guess I would suggest that the board goes through the conditions of approval in your staff report. If there's any that the board members independently wanna pull out, uh, they can let Amy know. Uh, then if you wanna vote on all of them, either for or against, if someone makes a motion like that, we can always hit those. Uh, if it doesn't pass, the ones that people wanna discuss in detail, uh, really kinda don't matter. Uh, because they do need to meet all these conditions. So, uh, now it's up to the board with, uh, how you'd like to proceed and.
Is, is Hexagon Energy here tonight?
Yes, Scott Remmers here, who's been at the, I don't know, I should go back to my report and I can tell you how many meetings. But yeah, Scott's, Scott's in the order, i- in the audience.
And I was wondering how he felt about everything.
Uh, thank you for the question, sir. I, I've gotten a chance to review it and I hope that it's done. Organizing everything, uh, besides trying to just on, as you mentioned, the scripturiz error, changing the name from Hexagon Energy LLC to the, the project name. Uh, beyond that, we're, I'm very comfortable with this and I think we've, we've hit all the major points, sir, mine.
Okay, is there any, uh, specific of, of the 19 that, uh, warrants a particular discussion by any board member?
Um, I just had a question. I think it might be a typo from something else, but where did I just see it go by? Uh, number four, preservation of landscape?
Oh.
Um, oh wait, no, that's not it. Wait, sorry, wait. Oh, I lost it. There was something left in about a mini storage area and I think it was left over from another.
Yeah, it's, it's possible. Oh, it's the bottom of page two. I see mini storage.
Yeah.
Yeah, there you go.
Uh, bottom of page, I'm sorry.
This, the, the last sentence in the, in the, in the condition, in the description.
Just to let you know, I actually read these, David.
Great.
Um, and I actually have a, I have a question about that one. It says the solar farm area will be cleared, but then replaced with native grasses and trees. But I'm assuming once it's cleared, all the solar panels are gonna be mounted to the ground.
Correct.
So there's no replacement of native grasses and trees, I assume.
No, no, you grasp, well, I can let Scott jump in if he would prefer.
Trees might be a bit of an overstatement and.
Yeah, I, I don't even see why you'd plant anything because nothing's gonna get a lot of light and it's.
Well, they, they, the, there needs to be a vegetative cover under, uh, everywhere. Uh, so there is, there is a deliberate planting of grasses for sure.
Oh, okay.
Part of their plan.
Well, maybe we could just strike trees, because that seems counterintuitive.
That's great. How about we modify that to put a period after grasses, not?
Hold on, I'm sorry. On my section here?
Yep, your section.
Okay.
The first, the second, second sentence. Uh, there's, if we put the, uh, period after, after grasses and excludes trees, yeah. And then I, I think the last, uh, sentence, uh, gets removed.
Oh, shoot.
Yeah, thank you.
You do read them. There you go.
I do read them, yes.
Okay. That's great, okay. Any other specific, uh, conditions that are of interest to board members?
I just have one question. I, I'm trying to, in my email to find it. Um, didn't we have some correspondence, um, where there was a change, um, to the entryway? Is that, am I misremembering?
That's right.
No, you are.
Is that included? I didn't know how much it impacted. When I read through it, it seemed to make sense. I just didn't wanna have to come back later and say, oh, we had to add that in. Is that all included in it? So much came through over the last couple of weeks.
Yeah. Yeah, the, um, basically when we, uh, or when they, uh, reconfigured the drive, it didn't, it didn't have any impact, so any of the. And so it was actually much cleaner than I thought it was gonna be when it first came in. It was, uh, I could probably find that, but it might take a while. But we, we do have that.
I just wanna make sure we talked about it if it needs to be talked about.
No, I believe, I believe that, that the change in the plan that reflected that minor change is part of the, the, the plan set that this is.
Awesome. I, I like it. I, I think it looks good.
Okay, uh, then I'll entertain a motion to, um, uh, indicate that the planning board, uh, believes that each of these conditions has been achieved. Each of these 19 conditions, if I, if there's a motion to that effect, that we can take care of this all at once.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Manley Go.
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Jeff Minahan. Any discussion? Okay, I'll call a roll call vote, because we're in Zoom, uh, working from the bottom up. Uh, Jeff Minahan?
Aye.
Uh, Hershey Herskoff?
Aye.
Betsy Randall?
Aye.
Uh, Manley Go?
Aye.
And I'm an I, so that's unanimous. Okay, so we can fill this out, David, that, and check all those points.
Yep, uh, and I'll make the changes, uh, the, the textual changes about Hexagon. And then I can send that over to you tomorrow.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll put, I'll put my electronic signature on and get it back to you. So we're all set on that. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, that is done, so let's, uh, stop your screen sharing.
Uh, come on, it won't let me blow up. Right, hold on, I'm trying.
Yeah, it's okay, take your time.
It's never not letting me go back into the full screen here. Uh huh, okay. There, hold on, now it's, I've just gotta do it.
And I think nine months ago, we didn't even know what Zoom was.
This is true. Alright, it's not letting me.
Uh.
It's, I don't have any, uh, here, let's see.
I think you gotta do it.
Yeah, I do. Oh, here. It's on my other screen.
There we go.
Sorry about that.
That's very good, no problem. Okay, uh, the next item on the agenda is, uh, Major Site Plan 20 dash 009, the Providential LLC five lot subdivision. Uh, and, uh, on Bennett Lot Road. Um, there's been some additional material submitted, and I think I'll ask, um, uh, ATAR Engineering, Brian or, um, Ken, whoever wants to talk, to describe the additional information that's been presented and we'll take it from there.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening. My name's Brian Nielsen. I'm from ATAR Engineering. I'm here with Ken Wood, also from ATAR Engineering, and Pat Carroll of Providential Equity Development. So we're here representing Providence Equity Development and the project on Bennett Lot Road. So, it's night where we're seeking preliminary application completeness for the proposed five lot cluster subdivision.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, Brian. Clerical note here. Um, there is some background noise coming from people, so if you're not speaking, uh, please hit your mute button. Thank you, sorry.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yeah.
So. I'm trying to.
Knock your office right.
So the, it, as part of the initial sketch plan, um, am I allowed to share my screen?
Sure.
Alright, let me bring up the, uh, bring up the plan so I can kinda walk through them here. My computer will let that happen. Can everybody see my screen?
There it is, yep.
But here's the, uh, cluster subdivision layout. It's very, very similar to the one you saw at sketch plan. I believe we have added drainage adjustments, uh, maybe relocated a few of the homes, but in the essence and the lot lines and everything remains as shown on the initial sketch plan. We've got meets and bounds on the right of way, showing a more of a close-up on the drainage adjustments. We've got proposed septic layouts over the test pits. And we have an initial grading and utility plan proposing to have, uh, detention ponds, three detention ponds to facilitate drainage and stormwater control. Got the road plan and profile, if anyone wants to go over that more specifically. And this was included in the initial sketch plan, but the high intensity soil survey from Michael Cuomo. We've also got some erosion and sedimentation control details, um, some additional engineering details in the initial survey. The boundary survey from tidewater engineering, that was part of the initial sketch plans, so. So. I know a lot of, uh, correspondence is common, uh, regarding the project, and I can go through that at the board's, uh, pleasure. So, um, I guess with, with that overview, I'd like to turn it back over to the board for a more specific discussion.
Um, I have a question.
Betsy Randall, go ahead.
Um, I'm looking at the map, at the map, um, on the, the, kinda cover page. And to the, like, almost directly north of the circle is like a crosshatch section? Do you see what I'm talking about?
Further, further north.
Yeah, further, like, above the roundabout, north of the roundabout, around, uh, above lot four and five on the map, that crosshatch, what is that exactly? Yes, that, yep.
That is a vernal pool, so that was located by our wetland scientist and soil scientist Mike Cuomo.
Okay. Thank you, that was my, I just wanted to clarify what that was.
Yeah, we, uh, we have that one in our legends, but there are so many hatches that it can get a little confusing. No problem.
I have an overall question. Um, this is proposed as a cluster development under 140 dash 47 of the, of the zoning ordinance.
That's correct.
And I haven't yet seen a narrative that ticks away at the various requirements of the cluster subdivision. Uh, there's a, there's a variety of them in there and they, I haven't seen that explained in, in a, in a succinct way, which I believe the ordinance requires. Uh, has that been prepared, uh, some narrative that goes through each of the, uh, items in the cluster to justify the cluster?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I, I saw the correspondence from, uh, Planner David, and he had kinda reached out to me asking for that. And it was completed this afternoon, understood. Obviously have not had time to develop it or, or to review it. But I do have that with me. If you'd like me to read through it, go through it.
Um, is it, is it a document that will be submitted here at some point?
Yes.
Uh, sure, do that.
Alright.
So, uh, Mr. Chairman, do we need that doc before we vote on whether or not?
We, we, I think, yeah, Manley, I think it's okay if they explain it, uh, and we can decide whether we need to have it and, and review it independently before we take action. But I think, uh, since we're, um, here, we, we're certainly given the opportunity to, to go through it.
Appreciate it. Is it showing on my screen?
Yes, it is.
Alright. So. So, a- as you know, Mr. Chair, specifically per the ordinance section 140 dash 47B1C, we have to submit a narrative describing the opportunities, the constraints of the site surrounding land uses, areas of abutting interest, and how the proposal fits into the town's comprehensive plan and open space slash recreational plans. Um, and this is, uh, kind of the following narrative. So, site presents a good opportunity for a cluster subdivision. Uh, cluster subdivisions are encouraged by both the comprehensive and open space plans for South Berwick. They strike the balance between environmental protection and allowing the owner a reasonable return on their investment. So, lot sizes are much smaller than in a standard subdivision, but the total number of not, lots may not exceed that of a standard subdivision. This means that the remaining land that is not being developed must be preserved as common land in perpetuity, and it must be stewarded by some entity. This is often subdivision homeowners association and/or another conservation organization such as the Great Works Legion, Regional Land Trust. So, the lot is constrained by forested wetlands on the location of a gunkwit brook and two vernal pools that are noted on the site plan. The proposed reduced road length avoids all wetlands with the exception of a 685 square foot area of wetland impact with the development. It also avoids, uh, both the vernal pools. The headwaters of the Agunkwit Brook are located on the southern edge of the property and all proposed development is at least 300 feet from the high water line. So by allowing the cluster subdivision, the road does not need to connect through to both sides of the property. And this allows the developer to avoid any disturbance to either vernal pool. And the surrounding land is primarily made up of single-family residences, farmland, undeveloped open space. Also, the Oris Falls Conservation Area is located to the north of the site on the opposite side of Emery's Bridge Road. Uh, this is home to 2.5 miles of trails, the Balancing Rock and Oris Falls. Uh, to the south and east of the site, on the opposite side of Bennett Lot Road is the Kenyon Hill Preserve. And both conservation areas are part of the Great Works League Regional Land Trust. Uh, the South Borough Comprehensive Plan notes the purpose of the Agamachus Resource District R5. That's relevant because most of the site and all of the developed portions of the site are within the R5 district. So, by the comprehensive plan, uh, the purpose of the R5 district is one to protect the Mount Agamachus area in accordance with the goals and strategies of the comprehensive plan, uh, to allow for low-density housing while creating a contiguous area of important natural resource systems of scenic beauty and recreational opportunity, and to minimize and prevent those uses which would prove detrimental to the environment of the Mount Agamachus area. Uh, sections of the comprehensive plan also state that the minimum lot size of the R5 district should be increased to 200,000 square feet. This was amended in May of 2008 to maintain a three-acre zoning in the R5 zone. And this is, the three-acre zoning is what we've kept to on our design. The open space plan calls for the preservation of natural resources in the R5 district. Uh, the language is very similar to the comprehensive plan. It requires the planning board to require two plans be filed when a development is proposed in our three, our four, and our five districts, as well as the expanded portion of the R2 district. These plans are to be both standard and clustered subdivision approaches to the design and developing the lot. This allows the planning board the option of choosing a plan, which is most representative of the principles and policies of the comprehensive plan. Please see the three items above that are taken directly from the South Borough Comprehensive Plan. So, inclusion after reviewing the South Borough Ordinance Comprehensive Plan and Open Space Plan. We feel that the cluster subdivision plans are encouraged in the R5 district in which most, all the proposed development lies. So we look forward to discussing this with you at the next available meeting, which is now. And I was a lot happy to answer any specific, specific questions.
Um. Do board members have any preliminary comments on, on this, uh, presentation? Uh, Jeff, go ahead.
Um, I've, I've spent a lot of time over the last couple of weeks.
I've I've spent a lot of time over the last couple of weeks looking at this. Driven by the site and to try and get a better handle on things. So I I appreciate the work that you've done with the the cluster. I think that where we've gone so far is it that was that's the better choice. My concerns are I'm trying to make things jive. As I look at the comprehensive plan, I I could try and find it, but I see on the comprehensive plan that it suggests that the town look at expanding or increasing the minimum size of a lot in our five district to two hundred thousand square feet. Correct me if I'm wrong, but that's how I read it. But then then I'd also look and I look in our ordinances and I see on table B that the R five minimum is a hundred and twenty thousand square feet. So I'm a conservation guy. Well, I'll hide about around about that. So I I personally would say minimum size to two hundred square feet. That sounds good to me. Preserve that R five area. But also, like I think you've also mentioned in that the range of the lot sizes. I think only one meets the hundred and twenty thousand square feet minimum. And I'm just wondering how am I misunderstanding the ordinance and the comprehensive plan and what's really going on? Maybe I'm just misunderstanding.
No, no, that this is good, Jeff. This is a necessary discussion. The whole concept, the first of all, the comp plan had recommendations regarding lot size. And that that they were not necessarily carried in the zoning ordinance that we're dealing with. So while while the complaint had a goal of two hundred thousand square feet, there is adopted for what a number of reasons that a hundred and twenty was a hundred and twenty thousand square feet, which is a three acre lot. As as Brian talked about. The the way the cluster concept works as I as I think about it is you 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 take a project and you lay it out in as a conventional subdivision with three hundred thousand excuse me, three acre lots, hundred twenty thousand acre, all of them. And then if you, in order to have less infrastructure, less impact to environmental resources, wetlands, historical resources, view sheds, that kind of stuff. You can take that number of lots that you had, you could calculate. In this case, it was five.
Yeah.
And you can put them on a smaller chunk of land and then in the so called cluster. And so that the lots in this cluster don't necessarily meet the hundred and twenty thousand square feet. They meet a lesser standard, which is laid out in the one forty forty seven, which I think is a let's see. Yeah, three acre lot has to be. If the underlying district is a three acre lot, which our five is, the lot size has to be at least thirty thousand square feet in a cluster.
Okay, I gotcha.
Okay, yeah. So so you're taking the number of lots that you're allowed in that chunk of land. And you're using less of that land to 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 create those lots. That that's the that's the concept of a cluster, which is used in many, many towns. The idea is to is to is to lessen the amount of land actually encumbered with roadways and drainage and and lot development and then put put more on smaller lots to have a bigger chunk of the land reserved for other purposes. Is that a reasonable explanation, David? He's nodding.
Yes. Yeah, great. No, I appreciate the explanation for just for the public as well as myself because I I know that we had said, yeah, go with the cluster. And I personally like the cluster because it used it hit those resources less. Which is really what the aim is and and why I was glad that you.
Yeah, and and that is the aim. If you look at the and I I reread the cluster language several times on this on this project because it's so relevant. And it and you have to look at that and you say, okay, this chunk of land will have in essence less development because the cluster is going than it would have if it if a conventional subdivision, which is approvable probably, is allowed. And that's that's just that's just how it goes.
I had another thing. I I had a question on. So as as I understand the property line, it looks like, so when I stand on the road, the main road, what is it Bennett Lot Road and I look towards this property. So yeah, right where your cursor is there, Brian, over to the right a little bit more in this right over the word road. On Bennett Lot Road. This area here is not part of the property, right? Right there. That's is that part of the property or not?
It is not.
Good. All right. That then I was understanding correctly. So I'm believing that there is a brook there. You can see the culvert runs under the road that you would be accessing the property. I believe that that wetland brook runs essentially into that that whole property that's not on not the property you're talking.
Right. I'm happy to go through some of the stormwater stuff. We had discovered that looking at the proposed or the existing topography.
Yeah.
Have that one here, but maybe the the grading plan will show it best. So existing topographies, all these weird lines out here, but essentially a huge amount of the land to the left drains south and west. And it collects right at the entrance of this this pipe here that runs under the road. So it's an eighteen inch concrete pipe. And I'm sure Bill can take a look at the size of that watershed, the size of that pipe and realize that that probably clogs up something fierce. So it essentially makes kind of a natural waterway through there. And that's why they have that existing drain under there in the proposed condition and maybe the the road plan and profile shows that best. So we're proposing a much larger what we call a pipe arch. So the existing is eighteen inches and the proposed will be seventy one inches wide and about four feet tall and it'll allow for better passage of water through there. I believe where me and Butter specifically noted that during major storm events, the existing dirt road there will actually flood. And that matches up with our modeling that that watershed is so large that the water coming here can't push through there fast enough and it goes over the top of the road. That's why we need something much bigger. That was probably that was probably too much engineering for for the the question.
Actually, no, Matt, I can I jump in for a second. Ask then. Is it is it basically going to look like a culvert or is it actually like a small bridge?
It's gonna look more like a culvert. It's kind of like it, but it's it's just a slightly different construction. It's almost tier shaped. So it's got it's got like a wide arched bottom and then it kind of comes up with a little bit more of like an aggressive climb and back down.
Is it precast concrete that's put in place?
I believe the ones that we typically deal with are corrugated metal, but they do. I think they have precast versions.
Can you? Well, while we're on this thing about the Agunkwit Brook, because that seems really important, can you put back up your narrative that you had up a second ago? Because I I noticed and if you could go back, go back toward the top, there there's a point where you actually you sort of talk about vernal pools and the brook. And then you talk about the vernal pools, but you don't really talk about the brook again. And I'm wondering how that fits into what our requirements are then.
So the reason for mentioning the brook and and specifically the three hundred feet from the high water line, the Resource Protection District specifically calls out a gunk with brook. And saying that you have to be two hundred and fifty feet from the normal high water line of that. So if we go over to the plan here.
Does that mean property line? Does that mean actual structures built? Does that mean road? What what has to be three hundred feet?
I believe it's development, but I'd have to go back through the ordinance specifically. So this is where where I've circled my cursor here. This is where a gunk with brook enters the property. Per the tax map, it barely enters the property at all. So it kind of stops there. This is some additional water that, you know, very likely flows down through in there. And at three hundred feet is basically saying we're not developing, you know, their grading and everything has stopped at least three hundred feet from where we're showing that stream.
And what about where it crosses at the road?
We're not doing anything where it crosses at the road. Because that's off the property where it crosses at the road, you know, if I were to, I'm not even sure I have a specific a large enough view that shows it.
See that, Hershey? That was that was what I was trying to point out.
So is I'm sorry. So the road, so the road in off Bennett Bennett Lot Road is not part of the property.
Right. So this area.
Is owned by someone else.
Correct.
Is there an easement?
For the it's a natural streams. I do not know if there is these, but you're right. I believe there are easements called out for natural streams.
No, no, I mean, who owns the road?
Town, probably. Town of Town South Borough.
Town of South Borough, I believe. It's a large road, so I would assume it's not properly owned.
No, it's it's Town South Borough Road.
It is?
So I think Hershey, I think, guys, correct me here if I'm wrong. So Brian, if you could put your cursor on the road going into the property. Right there. Okay. So Hershey, to the left of that, there's a swath of land. That is one of the that is like the saved area A. And Brian, that is part of the property, correct?
I believe the property line is right.
Okay.
Year.
So I'm I was thinking I was reading it that the road going into the cul-de-sac is part of the is part of the land. But everything to the right of the road and and just above where the where the arrows are pointing and just below where the arrows are pointing, that is a different lot in the front. Yeah. And so I think Hershey, I think I'm trying to telepathically connect with you here. Is that my concern, I think, is the same as Hershey's, is that the water that goes underneath the road that that is already there, the 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 entryway, that water is is a runoff brook. It's not identified as the Agunkwit Brook. So
That's right.
So the it's not a protected waterway, although it directly feeds the Agunkwit Brook.
Well, I okay.
Very likely, considering where it is, but yeah.
And that's what my concern is, is is in order to you, this is a Agamanicus area, we're looking to preserve the area. That's what my concern is. This is a very hilly area in there. And it's running off directly into this this little stream.
Yeah.
Feeding into the Agunkwit Brook. So I think it's directly impacting their gunk with brook, even though it's not the Agunkwit Brook. And that's some gray area that I think the planning board, we need to figure out how we need to handle that.
I can I can say on the conservation side and as one of Butter correctly pointed out. And the reason we're looking to upsize this culvert is you you've been out there. It's a dirt road. So if that floods, you get all sorts of silt and road dust and whatever happens to be on the road at the time flowing down into the river. Or brook, or however you want to classify it.
Yeah.
It's not technically named, so we'll just keep it brook for now. If you replace that with a with a pipe that can handle that large flow, you you mitigate those environmental impacts. Because you won't have road flooding any longer. You'll have a pipe that can just allow the natural stream to continue through and under the road.
Right. Yeah.
Okay.
Hershey, do you have? Did you get any? I didn't mean to speak for you. Did that clear?
No, that's that's I I'm trying to understand it. I I am looking at though. I'm still trying to understand. It seems like to me, looking at another plan, I don't know what number plan it is. It's the last four point one, the soil survey. It seems like the road in fact is part of the property. No? There's this little sort of, you know, road shaped bit that goes to the Bennett Lot Road and that is in fact encompassed in the property. Is that right or no?
The road that enters the property, and I'm not sure if this pink is the best color for it.
Right. That's what I'm looking at too.
Right. So the road that enters.
Right. Right. And that's part of the property, no?
Correct. But everything to the right of it in the front is not.
And to the and to the left of it.
Correct. That's all off the property.
Or somebody else's lot. Okay, gotcha.
Another question as far as runoff right now. It's like I like I said, I don't know if anybody else has walked around out there. It there's a it's a lot of little hills up and downs up out there. So it makes sense as to why the why that little stream on the front Bennett Lot roadside is there. Because it's it's all running in there. I think you forgive me, I think that you mentioned some sort of pits or a catch drainage catch pits or
Detention ponds.
How does that? Do those drain off like off the rain that we just had the other day or is like ponds are rain? Those would be pulled up very quickly. Do they gradually leach into the land or do they really retain it? Do you? I'm not really sure how that's built up.
Typically, it's a little bit of column A, a little bit of column B for a detention pond, more specifically here due to the soil type. It very likely what will happen is the water will enter the detention pond. You'll also hear them called detention basins. And it'll kind of slowly fill up to a volume where we have an outlet pipe. And once it hits that outlet pipe, it'll slowly drain out what we call a level spreader, which is essentially just a pile of rocks that the water hits and it slows down and it spreads it out. So it doesn't create any additional erosion or any what we call scouring on the land. So the goal of that and we model this to make sure and you'll have all that with the final plan is that any water that is entering or entering the wetlands or leaving the property is entering at the same level of intensity as it did before we did any develop. So basically, the the amount of flow hitting any of those sensitive areas has to be at or or less than what it is right now.
Okay. Okay, yeah. So you're not creating waterfalls out there.
Correct. That is a big no no.
Okay, yeah, that's great. And and just the impact, I I don't know. The impact is that that water that collects in that basin will not at this if doing this will not necessarily go to the Agunkwit Brook anymore. Instead, it will gradually leach into the land before even making it to that brook.
Right.
Likely, right?
Right. We're like I said before, we are more than three hundred feet away from any development touching the headwater of of the high water line of Agunkwit Brook.
Correct. But this is planning board. This is where my my concern is is that is technically correct. However, water will be running off of this directly does flow into that that little stream along the roadside of Bennett Lot. If I'm reading the land correct. You know what I mean?
It 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 it's delayed, it's retained, but it doesn't stop. And sooner or later, it gets to that tributary.
And it it's more than sooner than later, Bill, I believe. And I just want to mention that just so that we're aware that it's not on this property. It's it's totally not on this property, but it's impacting a resource that is a protective resource. So I just think we need to navigate that in an appropriate manner.
Which I I thank you, Jeff. I had a question related to that as well. There's there's a whole lot of different ways you can handle stormwater management and some are with simple retaining detention ponds such as this. And others are have underdrain systems that act a little more for like a natural system where anything is, there's a lot more stormwater treatment that goes along with it so that when the water finally leaves, it not only is is leaving at a rate which is less than the peak rate, which is one criteria. But also is slowed down and is encouraged to infiltrate into natural soils and is afforded some level of treatment from the pavement runoff and the and the houses runoff. Brian, as as you considered such, you know, BMPs here as opposed to detention detention ponds?
We could certainly look into them. We could certainly look into them. Um, I really like forested buffers myself. Uh, because they tend to retain a little bit more of the natural land. Um, that being said, it would, that would have to be an ongoing discussion. We are below. The DEP requirement for, for needing what we call specific stormwater treatment.
Yep, like I got, I know, I understand that. But I, I'm just thinking, i- i- is this has become a very. Um, focused issue here with the Guncred Brook and so forth. May, maybe, maybe going a step farther and doing something which. Manage stormwater at the next level might be appropriate to allay the, uh, issue, the issues and concerns that have been raised here.
I'm, I'm happy to entertain it, yeah, and, and discuss it with my client, for sure.
And it, uh, I, I, I understand that DEP at, from a permit perspective, because the scale of this project. While seemingly large locally here is not large from a DEP perspective. And, uh, so, but, uh, you know, locally, if these are the issues that, that, that people want to think about in the R five and. And then to, to, to address the, uh, creation of the R five and, and what the, what the overall. Uh, uh, goals are for it, that might, it might be a reasonable thing to consider.
I agree with that.
Yeah.
Can I ask, I, I, I've assumed all along that, um, your client is planning on developing these houses and selling them himself, yes? Or herself? They're not being, the lots aren't being sold off individually, correct?
I don't have a full understanding of that. Pat, you want to jump in on that?
You.
Thank you, Pat.
Trying to understand the question, Hershey.
Yeah, are you, are you planning on selling these as lots and letting people develop them themselves? Or are you planning on building houses yourself to sell?
We're entertaining both ideas.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, if someone comes to us with a plan and, and wants a lot and we'll certainly build them a house. If not, we're gonna start putting up, uh. Putting up some houses for sale.
Okay.
On, on that topic, it's, it, the segue is into something I was thinking about. In the, uh. For, uh, section forty-seven of the, the thing describing clusters, it talks about the house locations. Being part and parcel of the cluster, uh, design. So that, uh, uh, and, and you're showing house locations here. I just want to make sure that. Uh, that addresses the, um, the requirement that, that the house locations be part of the cluster. So in other words, someone couldn't come in and, and move a house to the other side of the lot. Uh, that, 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 these locations are intended locations for the homes.
That's correct.
Yeah, okay. Um, the other thing I, I noticed in here, there's two other items here. Uh, um. The, uh, I think the forty-seven requires you to locate the, uh, reserve, um, septic leach field. At, at the time of, of cluster, uh, approval. Uh, uh, has that been thought of? I see there's. Uh, septic system, leach fields shown, but there's no reserve system yet shown.
Right, we can, we can put reserves. We will certainly have reserves on, um, by the time we're seeking preliminary approval.
Yeah, but at, at, that's part of the, the clusters. I, I, I raised that. And the other thing, uh, and you've described, uh, Brian, you did it when you first came to us, uh. You should, you have, I think, A, B, and C common areas. Can you point those out on one of these plans?
See, we have. This one actually extends kind of along the property line, which is a nice little buffer.
That's, that's C.
That's correct. And B. Kind of buffers this side.
Yeah.
I believe. A. I believe A is. To the edge of the property line.
Okay. Okay, so, and, and, and these you are, you're, you're saying meet the requirements for common space?
Right.
And, uh, the requirements include. Uh, access from all the, all the lots to each of the common spaces. How, how is that afforded here?
Right. In five lots, pedestrian access along the roadway, understanding that there aren't sidewalks on this particular road. You know, four of the lots touch open space C. I, I would, I would push for, uh, pedestrian access from, from each since they all kind of connect to the road.
Yeah, I'm wondering, I'm wondering if, if, um. That might need to be further. Thought about, and I don't know if there's, uh, a common easement to a couple of these places. That, that would be necessary, um.
I'd certainly look at it. I mean, there are. Uh, this dotted line here kind of represents, you know, some existing trails that go throughout.
Right, right.
I can, I could speak to. Our client and, and consider maybe a pedestrian trail easement.
Right, I mean, I, I'm saying, I'm saying.
Of the site.
Yeah, cause, uh, C gets one, two, three, four lots, not five lots.
Right.
Presently, and then, but that you could easily afford that.
Right.
And I just, I guess, I think it just needs a little, we're trying to make sure that the, if we go forward here, the ordinance. Is met in all regards. And I think that this, that this is something that needs to be further developed. And. Uh, I think, I think Pat talked about this early on. The concept here would be probably that these common lands be. Owned by the homeowners association?
That's correct.
Yeah. So, so there's a homeowner association document that would go here and that would describe the, um, ability, I mean. I, I, open space C looks like it's got a, a bu- bu- bunch of uplands in it. So that's, you know, that's, that's next to the tributary that goes to the. Agunkwit Brook. So that would be an attractive place to perhaps, you know, have access to, for example.
Right, the, um. Lot four ends kind of right, right up top here, so. It would be, you know, a pretty small thing to give lot five and.
Right.
You know, full access to that as well.
Yeah, so I guess, I guess, yes, I'd, I'd ask that you think about, uh, developing that along with the other issues here.
Hey, hey, Brian, can I ask, what, what's the disposition then of the land that's to the north of that where it's squared off for those final two lots? Cause that was originally part of the non-cluster plan, right?
That's right. This is a, this is a vernal pool. Which, I'm, I'm not a specific vernal pool expert, but, um. Tends to be the home to a lot of protected species. So if we can avoid touching that or anywhere near that.
Yeah. I think, uh, sure, as, as Hershey's question more, that's part of the, of, of a lot that you're, that you own, right?
Correct.
Again, so, and is that become open space? What's that, what's that, what, what happens to that piece of that lot?
Right, I believe that would also be open space or continue. Right.
You, can you do me a favor and outline that piece just so I know what the pro, I, if, I assume the property line splits right between those two ponds, right? And goes out to the road?
Right, there it goes.
No, isn't.
Yeah, that, that's the rest of the lot.
Okay, is that, can I ask then, is this right, you can't see my cursor, can you? Do you see the property line that goes between those two ponds?
Yeah.
Is that a separate piece of land owned by somebody? It's a separate lot? That's not part of your property? Okay.
That's correct, that's correct, yeah.
Okay.
That's, uh. According to, geez, I can get rid of this portion of the cursor.
Oh, there it is, right there.
That's, uh, Corey Hussey and Wayne Will.
So it's a pork chop lot from, from, uh.
That's the first time I've heard that term. Thank you for that, but.
That's an old, that's an old term. People, you.
I wasn't gonna say it.
Flag lot's another way to look at it.
But I, uh, have something to say, Bill?
Sure, thank you, Manley.
Sure, just some observations here. So I think the board's. Done a good job pointing out that there's a lot going on. As far as the drainage, but. I don't think we've been able to. Figure out. Uh, as far as the development is concerned, whether there's positives or negatives. In so much as the development is going to. Create. And without doing that, I think it's pretty hard for. The developer to. Address the items that kind of. Puts the ball in their court to try to. Figure out what we're talking about, trying to. What action we're trying to do to. Make so we don't have any problems. That's one thing. The other thing is the open spaces. They say they're gonna keep a part of the development. And I'm not sure how everything is connecting there, but. In my view, it might make sense just to give it to the. Great Works Land Development, then everybody. Including the development can enjoy it, but. That's just my thoughts, but. You, we've been doing a lot of talking, but I think. We need to, uh, try to figure out whether or not. There's any action we can take as far as. You think that they've met requirements. Or, um. Or a full application, in my view, I think they have. Uh, so that. The next meeting, we can start discussing some of the other things and. I have, have the developers, uh, notified all the. People around. I know we ask for that almost every time, but I don't. It's been a while and I don't know if they've done that or if they haven't, um. Or if they intend to, or what's happening with that.
I will have to follow up on that one. I know we have received. A good amount of a butter correspondence. But I'll double check with that.
I think it's our understanding that when this came in for a sketch, they, they, uh, they complied with our request to have it all, um. Um, uh, to, to, uh, notify our butters, uh, uh, informally. Uh, there, there will be a formal, uh, notification as, as part of the hearing process whenever that happens.
So that they have notified him informally then already?
That's my understanding. So I'm not sure they got everybody, but, uh, the, by, um. Brian and, um, Pat, as you did that, did that, I'm, I'm getting a note through, through a chat here that, uh, uh, some people have not been notified. So, um.
So, so I think we need to ask them directly. Have they done it and do they intend to do it if they haven't?
Certainly do.
So have you done it?
I, like I said, I'm not, I'm not sure, so I have to double check.
Okay.
I'm sorry, what, um, Bill, could you remind us what official notification is triggered by?
We have a policy.
Right.
We've had it since COVID, since we've been doing these Zoom meetings. That when a project comes in at the sketch level, that the applicant, uh, they, they identified all the abutters as part of that problem. Or that, that process, I should say. And that they, they send letters to each of those abutters that are not part of the. Ordinance requirements for notification, formal notification under, um, uh, for public hearing. But just a general notification so that they can be aware and participate in the process. We've been doing that for a number of months.
Right.
And that's, that's done by the applicant, not by the town. When we, when we go to a public hearing, that's done by the town.
Very.
And, uh, so I, I, uh, on, on your comments, uh, Manley, I think, I, I think. Uh, we've expressed some things that I, I believe the applicant does understand that we'd like to think about, which is, has to do with, uh. Um, uh, perhaps considering higher level stormwater treatment. And also, uh, consider, uh, access to the, uh, common land, which is required under the ordinance. It's not shown yet. And they show, uh, reserve, uh, septic, uh, lots, which is required in the ordinance and not shown yet. So I, I don't know if any of those things are. Are not understood by the applicant's team.
I guess my, my only, I understand, I understand the comments and I understand the guidance for sure and it's much appreciated. I guess what I don't understand. Is whether that takes away from application completeness, not saying approval, cause I know that's. Down the line, there's a preliminary approval after. Public hearing, to my, to my understanding of the process. But as far as the application being deemed complete for the planning board to begin their review process is, is, uh, what we're seeking this evening.
My personal position is that we have to take care of the things that are required into the, in the, the cluster forty-seven regs. In order to find, I, I would personally have a hard time finding it complete, to move it ahead until all the cluster requirements are met.
And so more specifically, a- assuming you'd be gracious enough to accept the narrative that I, that I read. Would that simply be the open space connections?
And the reserve lots, the reserve, uh, septic?
The reserves.
And I don't know why, if you could, if you could consider the stormwater enhancements, that would, that's not necessarily part of the cluster, but. It is related to cluster because cluster wants to have a high level of environmental performance, so.
Right, I mean, that's. Right, that, that sounds like strong and, and, and appreciated design guidance. I just. Didn't seem like it would take away from a complete check to me.
So, eh, and Bill, um. Can I also ask, since people got notified, um, at sketch plan? And we've had correspondence, but we're now going to wait for, um. Public comment, uh, at a public hearing. I'm still wondering if there's a way to get more information because. I, I would like to hear, if we can, from David McDermott, who wrote a letter. That seems to be. Incredibly prescient, prescient at this, prescient at this point, at this point.
I think it's okay, uh, uh, if we're, if we're careful here, we can, we can accept some pu- public comment. It's not, it's not. Hearing comment, it's, it's, uh, uh. With, with, if it goes, gets a lot of detail and then we might, we have to cut it off, but, uh, I'm open to. Hearing from David and the other gentleman who wanted to speak at this time, without, without objections from the board.
I, I would like to have something to say before we get to the F, it's all right, Bill.
Sure.
So. Uh. This is the way I see it is that. Personally, I, I think it's a good plan and everything, but. I, we've had a problem and the problem has been this, is that. We get to, to the end of some of these projects and. People are saying, you're just now notifying me. And so how we've been handling that. Is, uh. We've asked if the applicants would do it willingly. I understand that there is no. Legal requirement for them to do it. But personally, what I don't like is. To try to get to the, the point is, be getting a runaround and. I'd rather have someone say. We, we don't intend to do it. We're not required to do it. We're not going to do it as opposed to. Uh, give me the runaround because. And if that's the case, that's their right. Um, but we need to, if, then our people aren't gonna, uh, do this voluntarily. Then somehow we need to. Make it a legal requirement as a process to. Notify people upfront. So that they can, um. Have their input and we can consider.
Yeah, I, we, we talked, I, I agree with you, Manley, and we, we, I, I think we ought to take up. A ordinance discussion of our ordinance to require what we are now requesting and is our preference. I think it makes all the sense in the world to get people involved when things are still in the conceptual stage and. We're, we're doing a pretty good job at that now, but that's not reflected in our ordinance. But I think we should, we should consider that and, and perhaps, uh, suggest changes to our ordinance.
And, and I think we should, but I think these applicants ought to just tell us straightforward, either they intend to. Comply with our wishes, which we have no legal, we, they have no legal requirement, or. They don't intend to comply, just so we understand exactly where they stand.
You mean, with respect to the notification business?
Right, it sounds like we haven't, uh, they don't understand whether or not they've done it. And we're not getting a clear answer, and I would just like a clear answer of how they intend to approach this.
Sure, so. Purely intend to take care of it. I thought it was taken care of. Having received more butter comments, that being said, I should have been tracking it and I wasn't. So if it hasn't been done, it will be done.
Okay.
Thank you, bro.
Yeah, and in terms of the overall process, uh, I think we're in a constructive conversation here, trying to. Um, balance the, um, um, uh. Uh, rights of the developer under the ordinance and, uh, take input from other people and come up with a project that addresses, uh, concerns. Maybe better than it would otherwise. I think we're in the middle of a constructive process on that. So that having been said, David McDermott, do you have any comments you'd like to offer tonight that are informal at best?
Yeah, thanks, thanks, Bill, and thanks, uh, the rest of the board. Um, I, I'm not unaware of your process. Um, I, I'm not unaware of your process. I didn't know there's gonna be a public hearing. That sounds like it's near the end of the process here.
Yep.
But if I'm allowed just to make a few observations from what I've heard tonight.
Go ahead.
First of all.
If you get, if you get way out of line, I'll shut you off, David, but I don't think I worry about that.
You'll be good at that, Bill. I know you will be. I know things have changed. I'm, I'm a dinosaur. Twenty-five years ago, when I was on the town council and we were doing the comprehensive plan. Uh, the whole intent, I'm glad that the, the developer brought up the comprehensive plan several times. The idea in the rural district was not to have cluster development. The idea was to have cluster development in town where there are services where you don't have to run buses out. It, they, they set up the zoning and the road frontage requirements in the rural area for a reason. To prevent this kind of development out in the, in the rural areas. So I'm a little surprised we're even talking about this, to be honest with you. Um, it's our five. It's, um, the Agamemnonicus Conservation Area. And the very fact that they've had to do so much work to try to manage water. Uh, indicates to me, uh, my original assumptions, I've lived here for forty-five years and I walk that road daily almost. Uh, there's a lot of water that comes off that area flowing into the brook that goes into the Agunkrat River. And eventually the Agunkrat Beach.
Yep. Uh-oh, we've got a technical break.
But the human impact that hasn't been addressed. You put houses out there, they're gonna be fertilizing their lawns. It's good, it's gonna have an impact on the, uh, on the Agamemnonicus area. And the ordinance says, doesn't say you have to have this serious impact. It says potential. Detrimental impact on the Agamemnonicus Preserve, and, and there's no way you can guarantee that that's not gonna have potential negative impact. The other, the only other thing I'm gonna bring up tonight, I'll wait for the actual public hearing is, um. Three hundred feet from the brook. I, I read the ordinance, it's three hundred feet from the associated wetlands or two hundred and fifty feet from the associated wetlands. So just because you're away from the brook, you also have to be away from the wetlands, uh, in that area. And I, I don't know that they've managed to accomplish that with the cluster development sitting right in the middle of that area. I would, I would urge people to go up there and really take a look at that property. It's, it's rocky, it's, it's rough and it's wet. And I'm the one that reported, uh, the flood a few years ago. I know they're gonna put in another culvert. But again, that proves my point is to the, a volume of water that at times of the year go through that area into. Anyway, I would, I, I'm surprised with this, to be honest.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Uh, Delatorre, I think? He's, he, what, is he still with us?
Yes, hi, Joe Delatorre.
Do you have a comment?
Yeah, um, I had, um, I guess a question that I would like the board to consider as part of this. Um, the original, um, required alternative proposal of the standard subdivision. That managed to get five lots there. Um, I, I actually don't know the, if. The comparison should be based on the number of theoretically possible lots based on the acreage or the actual buildable. Portion of the property, because I think a lot of this property is not actually buildable. And so that the, basing this comparison of five lots one way versus the other, I think is based on. A hypothetical which could not really happen because of some of the, um, restrictions that, um. That David mentioned. And I was just wondering if the. You know, if, if there is an intention to go forward with reduced size lots. Why it isn't based on a comparison of what's actually buildable or if it's the. As you've all said, I think a lot of this is wetlands and.
Yeah, um, that's, though, that's absolutely essential to this process, I believe, and, uh, and they, they'll, they'll go back and check probably. That when they laid out the conventional subdivision, they, they took out all the exclusionary areas that you can't build on, including wetlands and slopes and so forth. Uh, but they might want to check that just to make sure everyone's confident with it. I believe, I believe that those considerations were taken when, uh, when, when the five lot conventional subdivision was, uh. Uh, uh, laid out in concept, but, uh, we'll pass that along just for confirmation.
Okay, uh, thank you. And I also agree that I think that in the R five, it seems like this is inconsistent, but thank you very much.
Yeah. Um, thank you, both of you. I'll make a comment just because it's a fact. Um, uh, the cluster concept under the ordinance is available. In R three, R four and R five, and. Maybe it shouldn't be, but maybe you, you, you didn't think it was intended with the strategic plan or the comprehensive plan, but. The ordinance does allow for clustering in all three rural zones. That's just a fact. So, so it may not be consistent with the intent of the comprehensive plan, but that's, that's, that's ordinance that is in front of us, so. Okay, um, thank you then, um. Uh, is there any other comments from the board or questions of the board of the applicant tonight?
I guess I, I would like to get the board's understanding the comprehensive plan, because, you know, going through. I was also confused. There are sections, as you butters have noted. That kind of ask for more development to be maintained for the, the, kind of the downtown area. But at the same time, if I may share my, my screen again. This is from the South Borough Comprehensive Plan as opposed to on the South Borough website. This is our five districts. And it just says to allow for low density housing, which is what we're doing. So I, that, that, that seems direct to me and this language is also existent in the town ordinance. So. That's the guidance that we've been going on. And it, it seems fairly clear cut, so I, I guess I would like to understand, uh, the board's perspective on that. Before we go, before we put any more, uh, significant engineering into this.
I'll offer my thought. The ordinance is the ordinance.
I agree. I, um. I, I think, um. That the ordinance is the ordinance. I do think that the, the comprehensive plan gives us some very clear. Ideas as to where we as a town should head, um, and I do think that, um. The comprehensive plan gives better, deeper insight than an ordinance might be able to do. And, um, so like, as I like it, that Brian, my, one of my big hanging points is. With a comprehensive plan, we are required to. Balance these projects to not only the ordinance. But the, the comprehensive plan and the spirit of the comprehensive plan is how I believe. And one of the major things, especially out in the R five district, are crucial words like. Prove detrimental to the environment. Those are very crucial. And, um, I think maybe as a town, we need to get better at finding ways to measure that. But those, that is really the, the root of how I feel that I'm looking at things and balancing it with the ordinance.
All right.
I, can I say something?
Please.
So I understand, uh, the desire of some people to want to have bigger lots, but. It's been my understanding through the years, um. That you also have. Another interest and that's the landowner's interest. Um, in order to get. Reasonable amount of return or reasonable amount of use out of their property and. Uh, a lot of the landowners were very. Much opposed to these. Large lots and that's why. And other towns have gone in that direction, five and six acre lots, but that's why they, it hasn't happened because. Because of taking into consideration some of these other, uh.
Yeah.
Uh, concerns.
Yeah, I, 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 I wasn't part of that, but my understanding of the history of the R five. Uh, is that the, um, powers that were. Uh, uh, didn't, didn't agree with the, uh, el- some of the elements of the, of the comprehensive plan and said, no. Five acres is too much. That's, that's taking away the, the, the rights of landowners too much. And so the ordinance. That came out of that was a three acre lot and that's just, but history is history. It's a, the ordinance says three acre lots. That's what we got. Okay. Any other questions, the board?
Um, can I just check in, Bill? So, um, are we tasking David with reviewing the original plan? Not the original, but the, the set of plans that show the non-clusters and checking it with the ordinance? For Joe, Joe's comment.
I think.
It's Joe, right?
Uh, yes, Joe Delatorre.
Um, yes.
I, I'd ask, I'd ask, uh, Da- David could just consult very quickly with, with Brian or Ken Wood and clarify that.
Thank you.
That, that's just a fact that we're, we're gonna reestablish.
I, I, I believe we did, I did, I believe we did that.
Yeah, I think.
Prior, you know, a couple of meetings back.
Let's just confirm.
Double check it.
Yeah, that's great, great. So it's time for us to, to, to give these guys direction, um. I've already indicated my position and I, I'm, I'm not ready to. Support accepting this until the, uh, cluster details have been, um, clarified. And I think if they are, then we could, uh, potentially move forward with, uh, accepting it as a complete plan next time.
I'm, I mean, I agree with you, Bill.
I just wanna confirm, I wanna confirm that I'm understanding that. This is to confirm that the application is complete, not to approve the site plan, correct?
That's absolutely true.
Okay.
If we, when, when, when we accept it as a complete application, then things happen under the review process that can't start until then.
Okay.
I, I'm in agreement with you, um. Uh, Bill, but I, I think we need to. Reduce it to a list of items or, or a town planner needs to. So the developer has a clear. Uh, goal to meet, so we can meet that on, for the next meeting.
Uh, I think we just went through that, but, uh.
Yeah, we did go through it, but I, I guess what I'm saying is if there's a way that our planner can reduce it to writing. Or we can do it right now by itemizing it out, so everybody's on the same page.
It will be reflected in the minutes, Manley. Would that be okay?
Uh, we, we go through it. I mean, I, the, the ones that I have, uh, are the, uh. The, uh, access to the common land. From all the lots and have that thought through. That the reserve, uh, septic, uh, lots need to be, uh, shown. Uh, and that, uh, we are advising them to consider. A higher level of stormwater treatment that's consistent with the setting of the site. I mean, that, 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 excuse me, and that last point, I think also relates to the cluster. Concept and the, uh, the philosophy of the cluster, so they're all related.
I'm, I'm fine with those.
Okay.
And, and can I just add that? And also that David is going to check on whether. The ordinance requires you to consider buildable lots to count the number of lots.
Right.
In order to confirm the number of clustered lots.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay. Gentlemen, do you have any other questions of us tonight?
That's all for me.
Great.
Add anything?
No, uh, I think if we can address those three points, we should be in good shape for the next meeting, correct?
Yeah. All right. Thanks very much, gentlemen.
All right. Thank you for going through that with us. I appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Uh, now, Brian, you're gonna have to take your, your screen share off. There you go. Well done. Thank you. Okay, very good. The next item on our agenda. Is, uh. MSP twenty-eleven, easygoing LLC. Uh, Harvey Paul Medical Marijuana Storefront, ninety-seven Main Street. And, uh, there's Neil Repose. I see him.
How are we doing? Paul Jones and doing it from the truck here, so it's, might get a little jumbled.
Yeah, yeah. Um, last time we had this, uh, we left you with some questions and. You have some additional information you were gonna, you put together and, uh. I guess I'll ask you to, the, walk through that and then I'll ask, uh, David Galbraith to go through his, uh. Uh, memo of review.
Okay, um, yep, at the last meeting, uh, there was discussion of. Um, the historical society requirements for review on the project. Uh, and there was a request to put together, um, an existing elevation and proposed elevation, uh, sketch for the building. Uh, which we did that and submitted, uh, and I've been in contact with Dan at South Borough Historical and. Now, we discussed it and we're, uh. The client's willing to, uh, present this to them at their next meeting and take. Uh, take their input into consideration for any of the changes to the exterior. So that's, that's up for, for discussion here at the board to, tonight. Uh, and there was, uh, discussion of, uh, the owner control plan. Which we, uh, put together all the, all the requirements for that over control plan. Uh, as I said, it's a very small space, so it's, it's only gonna be, you know, a small six inch. You know, three hundred cubic feet per minute system. It's, it's, it's a very small, it'd be a very small system in there, but we put together. Other requirements and what, what should be in there. Um, and then we, I did put together a sketch for, uh, for the, uh, distance, uh. To Seacoast Christian on there and kind of the, uh, the radius around the property, uh, for that, for that five hundred feet. Um, and submitted that one and I kind of overlaid it on the, on the, on existing tax map. Uh, which, which shows it generally, uh, and just shows, you know, the scope of it. Uh, it's not, and we, there was not a surveyed plan. We didn't have the surveyors go out and, and, and mark the whole thing out. Um, but that was included with this last, this last submission. And I think we'd be happy to take any more input and answer questions.
Let me, uh, thank you, Neil. Um, I, I, I gotta, you had a conversation with Dan Boyle, who's the chairman of the South Borough Historic, uh. District Commission and, uh.
Yes, yep.
I, I got a call from Dan last, last night and, uh, he's joined us tonight. He's just waved at everybody. Uh, and, uh, uh, he explained to me the, the process, uh, that may be applicable in this case. Uh, I could paraphrase that, Dan, or you could explain it. Uh, you're.
There we go.
Okay, there you go. Good.
All right, uh, thank you, uh, Bill. Um, I did go through sort of our ordinances and the bylaws, um, in regards to sort of. Um. Why we would have, you know, reason for input on this. And in the section eighty-four dash four. Section, uh, section B and D sort of states that, um. We are to serve as a, to review all proposed additions, reconstructions, alterations or construction of every property. Designated as historic or a landmark located within the district. Or, um. Review any. Those demolitions or removals of a property located within the B one, B two or B three districts. And any designated historic district as well as. Uh, serve as an advisory role to local government officials regarding local historical and cultural resources. And act as a liaison to the local government, uh, and persons. Um, and organizations concerned with historic preservation. Um, that's sort of. You know, you had asked about if we sort of had a standing or if we, um. You know, should provide input on this. Um, on this project. And I feel that it, I think it would be good for the Historic District Commission to bring this before. Um. For our committee meeting, uh, first Monday in February, we can, you know, look at the proposed sketches and offer input.
Yeah, thank you, Dan. And just to make sure I understand the distinction, uh, and, and maybe we have it. Under, if, if this was in the historic district per se. Then any modification would require, uh, a determination of appropriateness. I forgot what you call it.
A certificate of appropriateness, yes.
Yeah, and, and that's not the case here, but because it's close. Offer an, an advisory position to the owner and to the, this town board. And we can take that as, uh, as, uh, your expertise as we, as we go forward.
Yep.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
So can I ask a?
Yeah, please.
Yep. So, hey, Dan, um, do I understand correctly, though, that would really pertain to just the exterior of the building, right? Not uses, not interior changes?
The, the, the sort of, the limitations that the Historic District Commission has is we only rule on sort of the exterior. Of the building.
Okay.
As it is viewed from the street. So the backside of the building, um, would not fall under our purview generally within the historic district. Um, then the others sort of, uh. Disclaimer, I always add that, you know, anything that goes on inside the building is outside of our purview, but is still very much under the rule of. very much under the rule of building codes and access, that, that type of stuff.
Yeah, and can I ask, what are the bounds of the South Burwick Historic District?
Um, basically, all of Liberty Street and Main Street from, I would have to say, basically what we describe as the brick block, which would be anything from the Chinese food restaurant, Asia, the Asia restaurant, up to the South Burwick Pharmacy. And then across the street, the building on the corner of, I believe it's Paul Street and Main Street, that, the building that Affinity Hair Salon is in, I believe. And then through the Odd Fellows, the Odd Fellows building, that side of the street.
Okay.
And then across the street, Sarah Orange Hewitt House and the old library.
Eastman House, yeah. Joe, what's up?
Yeah, also, under the certificate of occupancy, it was added in 2000 in the historic district, what she said, the B1, B2, or the BI zone, it needs a letter of appropriateness. So I believe they have jurisdiction over this. That's right in there, that's right in the bylaws.
Okay.
B1 and B2 were added in 2000.
Okay. Well, that'll sugar off, yeah.
Can I have something to say, Bill, when you get a minute?
Sure, go ahead.
So at the last meeting, is my understanding that someone said that this property was on the historic register and I'm still not certain whether it is or it isn't.
I, I, correct me if I'm wrong, Dan, that's the National Register of Historic Places.
That building was listed as a contributing building when the downtown area went through for the nomination for the National Register of Historic Places. If it is listed on that register that long and short of it is the, being listed on the National Register doesn't put any restrictions on the property, the owner, if they chose to, could tear that building down as long as they haven't used any of the federal tax credits available. It's basically, you know, as an honorary designation listing it as, you know, contributing to an area with the cohesive architecture of a sort of of a preserve downtown.
Thank you.
Well, it seems to me we need to have that definitively answered one way or another. So some type of research and a conclusion needs to be done. My other concern is that this is right beside a funeral home. And I'm, I'm not sure how I'd feel if was a loved one was having a funeral there, whether that would interfere with it. So I haven't put my thoughts together. It just something that's floating through my mind, trying to understand how I'd feel on something like that.
Okay, thanks. Dan, you got another comment?
Yes, for Mr. Gold, I can answer that question right now. Your first question, that building was listed as contributing for the National Register of Historic Places. As far as inside of the historic district in South Burwick, it is not in the historic district, but it is within, as Joe mentioned, the B1, B2 zone.
And the fact that it is listed as a contributor, in fact, what it is, are there any restrictions?
No, nope. Not, not, not concerning the National Register.
Right.
And can I just point out, as I understand, there's a distinction between a building itself being on the National Historic Register and it being a contributing building in a district on the National Historic.
Yes, when we went through the process in 2010 to nominate South Burwick for the National Register of Historic Districts, it's based on the village as a whole. There's 124 properties that contributed to making that the district that we have now.
Okay, thank you, that, that's very helpful.
Um, you know who I miss? I miss Larry. Larry always asked about the trash. So I looked and I saw that there was no plan for like disposal, whatever. And I remember that the last time we had a mixed use building with medical marijuana, we had a kind of a discussion about that and I can't remember what exactly we landed on as the agreement. And so I, I was hoping David might be able to bring that up so we can see what we asked the last, the, the last applicant we approved, what we asked them to do.
Mr. Robillard, yeah.
He had, I, I'm pretty sure, Betsy, that they had volunteered that they were going to be using their basement for some of their trash collection, isn't that right?
Yeah.
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 So they had it inside in the basement.
Okay.
Their ordinance requires, if they have a dumpster, that it be locked and surveilled and, you know.
Yes, yeah, okay.
I think our requirements are sort of clear that way.
Okay.
And this, and this one's proposed to be all interior as well. This is actually a much smaller retail space than, than Robillard is using over there, so.
Okay.
Neil, another question, I, I think you said in your remarks earlier this evening, you, you are going with a small active odor control system?
What we've put together is, is the requirements for, for a system to be put in this space. We don't have the specifications or the, you know, the cut sheets for, for the active system.
But, but last time we met, you were talking about relying on the, the, the wrapping business as being it, which is maybe allowable under the ordinance, but in a mixed use situation, we've, we've, we've taken the position elsewhere and we, I, we may well take the business of that. We want to have, so we're not playing catch up with a problem, if there is a problem, so that
Right, yeah, that's.
Is, is that, is that your proposal now to have it there and turned on if it needs to be?
Correct, yes, yep.
So it wouldn't, as I recall, maybe I read it wrong, but you said you had a, a series of thresholds that would require that, but now you're saying you'll get a small system, it'll be there and it'll be turned on if it's needed.
Well, it'll be a small system installed, not necessarily running 24/7.
Right.
We just want to have it ready and, and set up, just.
That, that's different than what I understood, so that, that's good, yeah, okay, thank you.
Oh, with that in mind, seems to me the exhaust had not ought to be pointing toward the funeral home.
Well, how these systems work is they, they exhaust to themselves, you know, they don't blow out, out the door, they, they, they clean the stuff through the carbon and reintroduce the air inside the, the space.
I see, I, I didn't understand how they work.
Yeah, they, they take, they take the air and they recirculate it through a carbon filter and the carbon takes out the compounds that are, that have the potential to cause odor supposedly. And
For the much larger facilities, they, they will vent it outside just due to the fact that having so much air flowing in the, in the facility is an issue. But for this one, it's so small that
And the one that we dealt with, with Robillard, did the same thing, it was an internal recirculating system.
Well, that, that's fine, if they had to have a venting system, it seems like going through the roof would be a good way to go, similar to the way they treat radon.
Yeah, yeah.
No, it's In this case, this one would be blown right into my office.
I tell you.
You won't, you won't get a whole lot done, it sounds like.
I've dealt with odor problems of other, other sources and it's, I'm professionally established because odors are in the mind of beholder. And, and some people smell them and other people don't and it's not worth arguing about it, which is why I, I'm supporting this system to be in upfront so that a tenant, a new tenant, a replacement tenant, someone walking down the sidewalk, that's, that's just not an issue, we're doing the best we can. Yeah, I went back and pulled up the Robillard findings of fact and conditions of approval. And we did include a condition that says odor control measures as agreed upon at June 3rd, 2020 Planning Board Meeting shall be onsite and utilized during the operation of this business. And as you recall, they showed us, I think it was a cut sheet and they explained the system to us, the charcoal filters, the whole bit. And then the other thing, actually, you know, I can, the could you see this? And it's highlighted number 10?
Yes.
Okay, and that was the other one, marijuana product waste shall be placed with a secured lock container as agreed with at the July 1st meeting. So that was that one. And what I did on on the current application that you're reviewing is I put some suggested conditions of approval on, on there. And what I tried to do is, again, I put right here odor control measures. And I don't know if I, I, and then I also had the chief of police needs to sign off on the final security plan. I did not include the one about the, the trash, I could certainly do that. You know, just have it in there, I think they're, they were planning on complying with a lock container. Okay, um, so tonight, do we have the clarifications, Neil, to the odor control, is that submitted in writing to us now or is that different from what we, what you said in a couple few days ago?
I know, that's the same, that's the same thing I, we've, I haven't changed that since, since that was submitted.
I didn't read that correctly then, okay, yeah. All right, and the HTC meeting will be in a couple of weeks.
Yep, and that, but that really, in this case, I think that just kind of pertains to the, to the building permit as far as, as far as the permitting and the approvals, correct?
Could be looked at that way, yeah. Unless there's a other position. So what Neil did provide, I don't know if you can see my screen again?
Yep.
Okay, so Neil provided a existing elevation here and on the right hand side, this was a proposed elevation and the only real modification that they were looking for right now is the removal of these two windows. And that they would put a, a cover over the front of it for, you know, basically patrons are waiting outside and a new door, so the door would replace one of the windows. So they are changing the opening so that it'd be more of a Joe issue as far as building permits and things like that. But, but, but But, but this whole thing is going to be considered and talked about at the HTC.
Correct.
So this is, this is the concept going in, but what comes out, we'll see.
Yep.
Can I ask? I've been diving in and I am having a hard time finding the ordinance for our marijuana. What is, what number is that? Where is that? I'd like to really take a better look in it. I've, I've looked on a town site and maybe I'm just overlooking it, I have no idea. I was hoping that you guys might be able to point it your way.
I've got it.
Okay.
Oh, wait, no, I, I'm sorry, I got the wrong thing. I found it. I, I, I was gonna email all that stuff to you guys regarding the other issue, I'll, I'll, I'll send the ordinance along.
I appreciate that, that way I can take a look at it. I just, my other concern is in regards to the whole 500 foot thing. And looking through past meeting minutes and things like that, I'm, you know, not having gone through it firsthand and even with you guys who did, it's, it's a while ago, so there's, it gets a little foggy. I just was trying to track what the real ordinance says, so if I could take a look at that, I just want to make sure that we're measuring correctly.
Yep. Hang on, I'm making a note to myself.
And again, seems to be my, my hot button issue, if people haven't caught on so far, is the the comprehensive plan seems to be coming up in my mind, I, I don't know if it's just in my dreams or what, but it just comes up as being a very crucial part to how we're, how we're trying to do things in the town, it's, it's not just a matter of a dream and a wish and a prayer. It really does help us. And so I think that when I look at the comprehensive plan in specifics to the historical, archaeological and cultural resources section, I think it might be very helpful for us as planning board, town council and just citizens taking part in helping to encourage other citizens to better beef this up, because in my mind, we have a gem of a town here that has some very crucial historical relevance. And when I, in my opinion, the comprehensive plan is very weak on the, on the historical side. And I think we could do a better job as we move forward as a town. And that would definitely help us govern a little bit better, especially with situations like this where a historical building is direct fire, so.
Hey, Jeff?
Yeah.
There was, there, there was a move, I don't know, almost a year ago, I think, to really take another look at the comp plan and redo it, because I think it's about 13 or 14 years old now and generally towns turn them over, you know, after 10 years, for example, and then also try to adhere to them. And I, I get the feeling that a lot of the intent was sort of lost in the meantime, so there has been discussion about it. I think partly we might be waiting for some changes in the administration before we take on such a big and expensive and time consuming project, but it, it sort of has to get done sooner than later. So just so you, there's a little background about it.
Yeah, thank you. And I, I just didn't even think it was that, that important, I thought it was great, but they really mesh well together as far as the direction.
Okay, I'll come back to this case, we are, are we, are we comfortable calling the application complete or are we waiting for some more clarifications? I'll, I'll go with the pleasure of the board.
I, I don't believe we have any unanswered questions, do we?
Want to make a motion to accept it as complete?
Sure, I will make a motion to accept it as complete.
Motion by Hershey, seconded by Betsy, any more discussion? Okay, I'll have to call the roll again, Betsy?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Hershey?
Aye.
Manley?
Aye.
Okay, okay. So we, I guess we would we can wait to schedule a public hearing until we, I, I think we should wait to schedule a public hearing until we get the input of the HTC, but we could, we could, we could not go with my recommendation.
I agree with you.
So we, so we can carry it, carry it complete, but we would wait to get the input from the HTC meeting before we go to public hearing.
I agree with that.
I agree.
That's fine by me.
Great.
I ask one quick sort of question or favor?
Please.
Um, we had a HTC meeting back in early December and we need to notify all the butters within 250 feet by mail. And I dropped letters in the mail to everybody easily a week in advance and there were a number of people who contacted me after the meeting saying they had just gotten their stuff. So with the postal service backed up at this time, could we maybe push the meeting out until February 8th rather than the 1st of February? To give people time for the mail to get to them?
Not sure this one, this is kind of pushing it out quite a bit, quite a ways beyond the normal timeline for this one, since it's not, it's not technically required, you know, component of the, of the site plan approval.
Well, Neil, maybe technically, and I guess you can argue that point, but we're trying to reach a consensus here based on, on, on everyone's input, so if you want to insist, that's one thing, if you want to go along, get along, we could, we could do what the HTC chairman is suggesting for his, the workings of his committee.
I think, I, I think that's fine to have that push the HTC meeting out, but I feel like it'd be we'd be taking that same, you know, his, their comments into, into account when we're putting that together for the building plan. And it would be, you know, the only issue would be is if the HTC, you know, presented something and wants to have it show something that the public didn't want to see, which then we'd be kind of fighting, it wouldn't be anything we'd be doing, just be going back and forth between the two entities.
Well, I respectfully disagree, I think the public hearing is going to be interested in the recommendation.
I, I think there's a, I think there's enough public interest in this.
Public interest in this, so pushing it off a little bit is not going to be a big deal.
Right.
Can I ask, so the HTC doesn't. They've met all the requirements of the planning board, right?
Not necessarily. We can, we can take into account uh what what the uh HTC's recommendations are. We certainly have the ability to that.
Okay.
Part of clarification for probably Amy and I mostly is um. The planning board wants to be notified of the historic district um commission. For they want a recommendation from the commission. Does that have to come to the board at their next meeting? Or would that just be done by correspondence from uh the board? It's the committee to the planning board? Or just, you know, the next day they um, you know, Dan, for example, emails Amy and says. You know, the board voted in favor of X, Y, and these elevations or and and that, then that's in your packet at the public hearing. So at least we know that that meeting has taken place. There seems to be. I'm just trying to make sure that the clients keep keep moving through the process.
That would seem reasonable, as long, as long as we have that information going into the public hearing.
Okay, so as long as we we have that. The public hearing. So if Neil, if you could help coordinate as soon as we have something from that or Dan, I'm not sure. Talking to um, but if you guys could provide Amy uh and I that in, or at least Amy that information and Joe. Then we can at least notify the board, schedule the public hearing and and keep the applicants on track.
Dan, did you have another comment?
Yes, generally the way it works with the historic district commission is the people submit their proposal and then at the meeting. You know, however, we vote yes or no, uh usually the. The interested parties are there and then at that point, we we file a certificate of appropriateness goes to the code office that night. So the. Um, the interest, you know, the the presenting parties usually get the verbal okay and then the paperwork goes to the code enforcement office that night. You know, it's usually slide in under the door. I'm assuming, Joe, you still get those. Under the door.
Well, and then that that would be all that we need then to do the to notice, so.
Okay.
So um. I think it's important for the, from my point of view, the historic district understand that. You can vote the appropriateness of it not, but I'm not sure that's going to affect the outcome. What might affect the outcome if you, as opposed to. Saying whether it's appropriate, not appropriate, it's how. Uh, this applicant. Limit the uh. Impact to the historic district as far as. The outside goes, but that's just my viewpoint.
Okay, great. Uh, so it's time's getting on, let's move on. Appreciate everybody's input on this. And uh, I see Amy just sent out the uh retail caregiver store ordinance to everybody. So everybody's got that. Uh, that's, that's what we're operating under for the uh uh medical marijuana storefront. Okay, so um with uh. That, we'll go back to our agenda. The next item, uh we um. Uh, Jack Krikus has been patiently waiting here someplace. I saw him. There he is. Hey, Jack. Jack, as you know, most you know, is the uh chairman of the town council, South Fork Town Council. Uh, and after the last meet, planning board meeting, Jack and I had a conversation regarding the confusion. Uh, if I can uh use that word uh or the the complications. Uh, as as David Galbraith talks about the uh, the uh, the 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 old Ed Sullivan guy spinning the 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 plates. Uh, and that we got a lot of plates here that would have marijuana all over them and they're different. And uh, so um uh Jack's agreed to come and have a basically open discussion with the board and interested parties. About the the different uh marijuana issues going on in town. And I'll I'll summarize them a little bit and then Jack can correct me. And uh, we really appreciate Jack taking the time to meet tonight. Um, uh, it's a, he's a very busy guy with the town council and other things and and uh. Offered to help try to get clarity and add clarity so that we can understand what. Uh, the issues are and what we as a planning board might choose to do or might not choose to do. We have um, the um. The citizens petition. Uh, for adult uh use uh retail outlets, which uh was uh accepted. Uh, November, December. Um, and is going towards a, the town council uh accepted it after the town clerk certified the number of petition. Uh, signatures and so forth. And as a citizen's petition, this comes out from from the citizen. Someone, someone put, put these these ordinances together and got enough uh petition signatures to have the 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 town charter. Requires certain things that we uh do with that and and the town council had a hearing. They scheduled a uh uh, they're scheduling a referendum vote on that petition article. And that's a process that Jack can go through a little more. Uh, separate from that. And entirely separate from that, as I understand it, is the um medical grow facility ordinance. And it's concurrent, it's coincident, but it's different. And Jack can explain why that is being taken up and it's kind of convoluted. Had to do with state law not being clear and not being clear what protections or not protections the town would have. To uh in the citing of the of a medical grow facility, which is one of the classifications in the state law. So that's separate. And then uh, it's a um a done deal, but there has been more discussion or more concern. But it's, I I believe it's not nothing we can do about it now without going back to the ordinances regarding the whole medical storefront thing. So Jack, is that a reasonable introduction?
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Bill, uh and thank you to the planning board for for having me tonight. Um, it's it's really needed. And uh. Things are moving fast and I apologize for any confusion that may resulted in the town council's action to refer. Uh, while both items and uh without more complete explanation, what I'd like to do is. Is uh, is make amends and so that we can get the the process clear moving ahead. So we're all in the same, all rowing in the same direction. And uh, so uh. One, one word that that uh that you use, Bill, about. At the council accepting the referent, uh the the petition, uh and and it's just that, it's just um. It was the petition that was filed uh on November seventeen. Uh, for for a a new uh chapter in the in the uh in the code, as well as some changes to the zoning ordinance. And um, those signatures were verified by the town clerk. And and once they're they're verified that the, so all the people who signed it are. Uh, are are registered voters of the town and. At at that point. Um, within thirty days, once that's been certified by the clerk, which it is, we have to hold a public hearing. Uh, that's just, we just have, it's a process thing. We have to do that. And so uh, scheduling that public hearing was not an indication of. Uh, the council being in favor one way or the other. It's just the process of what we have to do. And that that public hearing was held on uh December fifteenth, two thousand twenty. And uh, we found uh there were, there were, there were folks that that uh that appeared that evening via Zoom. And there were a lot of concerns expressed and two uh. Uh, among other concerns, two procedural topics were raised. Uh, one was the public hearing notice published in Fossil Daily Democrat, the local newspaper of record. And the second is the planning board recommendations required by chapter one forty, section one forty dash six B. Uh, paragraph, uh subparagraph three. So. You know, we we considered that at the meeting and and frankly, you know, I've 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 served on on. On on the planning board and on uh zoning board of appeals as well as the town council and actually. Worked on the last two additions of the comprehensive plan, but back in eighty nine and in two thousand six. And that particular. Item. Well, first of all, we never had a problem with fosses, you know, not being timely in their their publishing of a, or giving notice of a of a hearing. Uh, and the second was um, just a a lack of knowledge on on our part about the requirement for a um. You know, it's 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 clear, the 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 planning would shall make a recommendation. And so uh, once we concluded that those two things are are out there. It was obvious to us that a second public hearing would be required by the town council. And uh, that was the the process by which we referred to the planning board. Just to answer that question. Has been, has been discussed before because this is a citizen initiative. There's no wordsmithing, there, other than minor changes for consistency uh by the town attorney, which has been done. Uh, there's no, there's no drafting, there's no consideration of the language. It has to go to a vote. Once it's been certified and the public hearing has been held. So uh, we scheduled the vote to occur in June, same as the the school district uh vote. As well as any other state referendum. We don't have that that time yet, but it is uh a time impact. Uh, as far as a a sunset where the planning board, we request that you have your work done probably by late April. Uh, on this to uh, to do whatever research needs to be done. And uh, while it's a single line item for the planning board to make a recommendation, there's absolutely no limitation. On what the planning would may do to arrive at findings of fact and conclusions that will support that recommendation. And that that may include um, well, review of the comprehensive plan. Review of the the notes from the twelve fifteen public hearing. There were a lot of comments made then. What else? Consulting with a planning consultant. Review of the November two thousand eighteen voter survey results. And 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 tallying or any other means that the planning would chooses to to uh to develop. Uh, a finding that would support a recommendation. And uh, of course, we we would welcome a thorough review of the ordinance itself. And we we, the council has not taken a position for or against this at this point in time. And uh, I I like to wait till all the information is in and then. You know, probably at that, the time of that second public hearing, we might have something to say as as far as how we feel about the post ordinance.
So. When, when do you think that second public hearing is likely to occur?
We need to have it done. Prior to when we print ballots and have them ready for uh for mailing out to. To mail in voters. So so the the, the reason for the June vote is that, number one, it's, you know, just coming away from a extremely hectic. Time with the, you know, national election and the local election, the state election. And that created an enormous stress on our, on our, our staff. And 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 facilities, particularly with COVID and all the rest. And and so um. It it was, it was quite a challenge and we got through it beautifully. Uh, the clerk as the registrar of voters was was amazing as well as all the the ballot clerks, et cetera. But we figured that this was the best time to do that is occurring with another, another vote. So that's where we got to June. And so we need, that's what I'm saying. I think that the recommendation needs to be in hand so that we can have a public hearing before the ballots go out.
So that that public hearing might be in April, late April?
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. And um, and and so we haven't, we haven't set that yet. Uh, but again, it's it's a, you know, consultation piece that we need to get some input from the planning board to say, you know, how how long will it take you to do your work? To make that recommendation as well, because. Needs to be there.
If we thought about this and took this on as a, as a a project uh and a. Uh, this is a jan, January. So if we had. Our thoughts together by end of March or very beginning of April, that probably would be satisfactory.
Yes, that would be great.
Yeah.
I would think that we would again, we all put that on as an agenda item. Uh, and notify some of the people that are interested.
Yeah, that we'll, 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 we'll start that as an agenda item uh next time for sure.
Yeah, and and many of the folks that 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 spoke at the uh public hearing on December fifteenth. Attended via Zoom, uh the planning board meeting of January sixth, as well as participated in the public hearing of. Of the December fifteenth.
Yeah.
So so there's a lot of, there's a lot of community interest in this.
So in 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 uh, that that petition article is been out there publicly. And I, we made sure that it was emailed to all the planning board members this week. So everybody's got the full text of it and it's, it'll be our task to think about that from a variety of sp- of perspectives. And uh, decide whether we as a group have a specific recommendations or 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 comments on it either. In part or in whole or in philosophy, it could be, it could be as broad as we want it to be.
Yeah, um, I think that the only limitation is that. It it needs to be pursuant to um. The zoning aspects of of the of the referendum. Is this, there's two pieces to it. There's a proposed. Uh, new chapter of the code um entitled in the petition is chapter ninety five A. That's, that's new work and those are uh. That that's, that may or may not be, I don't think it's included in the, in the charge. But there is clearly some, some work uh for the planning board under uh section or chapter uh one forty. Uh, section one four, one forty dash sixty eight, uh marijuana established performance standards and uh. And table A. Like, for example, table A is calling for uh this particular use to be allowed in all zones in the town. Um, and and that's something I think that uh I'd be very interested in hearing your opinion on.
So is a town council primarily interested in our comments regarding one forty? Or if if it, or are are we specifically? Uh, advised not to comment on the rest of it?
Well, that's conjecture on my part. Um, I I'm I'm just reading the uh. The piece in the. In one forty and it occurs in the zoning ordinance. So it says, proposed changes to to zoning or chapter one forty. So I think if that kind of targets.
Yeah.
Uh, what the recommendation needs to be tailored to.
So uh.
Excuse me, uh, Manley, but if there are other comments that that arose on this proposed ninety five A. Separate from that recommendation.
Yeah.
Uh, we'd, we'd be very interested in hearing that because it's um. Well, your opinions val- you know, it's not part of the recommendation, but it it would be um for further consideration, probably.
Yeah, I think, I think some of the land use issues might be part of ninety five A, like the minimum, the lot size and that kind of thing. So I'm not sure it's, 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 it's totally reserved for the one forty. I think there may be issues in 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 the rest of it that we. Well, I'll have to, I'll have to look at it and evaluate it.
So at the end of the day, um. Is it just going to be a small line item on the ballot? Is it a recommendation of the uh? Planning board ought to pass or ought not to pass, or is it gonna be a more lengthy statement?
No, no, it it's the, what'll be on the ballot is the referendum question itself. Yes or no, it's an up or down vote. On on the totality of what's proposed. What the planning board's role would be. Is is to help inform the public as to what the planning board thinks about. Uh, this proposed uh petition. Referendum question.
That, that's very helpful, Jack, and and uh. Um, that's, that that really lays out, there was some confusion and it it this, this provides a lot of clarity and provides direction for the board.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, and then the other issue, uh if you spend a minute talking about the medical growth thing.
Yeah, um, there's a draft ordinance um on that that with Southern Maine Regional Planning Commission, David and Paul and and others. Have 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 worked on, there's a um. A a consideration out there right now um. For for property off of um, the old Shattuck Road will be, some people call it Lord's Land Extension. Uh, off of two thirty six for those properties heading out towards the old asphalt plant. And uh, and folks have uh. Have have made application for a uh, a building permit, which was denied by the code enforcement officer. And subsequently challenged in uh our appealed. Uh, it was administrative appeal on the decision of the code enforcement officer on his um. Denial of the um, of a building permit. So um. Concurrent with that, we were considering this, this particular piece and um. There's, there's several things going on with that and and um, we're researching right now as to. Whether or not cultivation was consciously not included in the state law. Or whether or not it was left in there and or left out. And because it it really has messed up. Our position where we thought as a council and as a town that based on the legislation, we had built in opt out status. And in order to allow these proposed uses, we would have to formally opt in. So the default was opt out, but now there's a, there's an opinion out there. That because cultivation wasn't mentioned in the state law, that it doesn't. I require an opt in by the town. I I look at it perhaps a different way, perhaps. I don't know if this would hold water and and, you know, I'm I'm thinking maybe that because cultivation wasn't mentioned. That it's now in fact illegal. You know, because the state didn't include it as part of the state law and and the default before the legislation was that was illegal. So.
I'm sorry, Jack, so this is, is this for medical grow only or is it for all grow?
No, it's medical grow only and and it's really, really important and you you touched on it in your opening remarks. That whenever the town council or the, you know, the planning board or any 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 local review. It it needs to be very specific as to what is being heard and targeted to which particular aspect. Because it can get very confusing very fast.
Yeah.
If we start talking about medical marijuana storefronts and then we 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 jump over into. Medical marijuana cultivation facilities and and it it or medic or retail marijuana stores. It gets all jumbled up and a lot of that is the the fact that the state bifurcated the law and went down two tracks in terms of medical and adult use. But that we're stuck with that and and it's a, it's made a real problem for us to keep going in an orderly fashion. Back in two thousand eighteen, we thought. You know, that this, the the medical storefront was a perceived need, people had to go to Bedford to the dispensary up there and all the rest. And so it was the view of the council to say, okay, let's take a look at it and we did. You know, we had a subcommittee or an ad hoc committee, we're looking at it and a whole bunch of things that led up to the action of the council based on. The approval back in in. January. Two thousand twenty with an effective date, I believe, in February fourteen, two thousand and twenty. And so we have, we have the ordinance as it sits right now. And then the other confusion with that was the, you know, the the five hundred foot setbacks from schools, which, you know, originally we thought was Young Street, but then in fact, one of the schools that was creating the offset. Is not there anymore. And so that that's why the 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 Paul House is now under consideration because of the movement of that line. And and so. We 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 might call it a an oversight, we might call it a mistake, but perhaps there's a reconsideration just to define it based on a geographic factor rather than an offset to something that might change. But again, as you pointed out before, your consideration of the cluster lot out there on Henry's on off of Bennett Lot Road. The ordinance is the ordinance, you know, the the local boards have to review what's on the books at the time of the application, so.
So so, Jack, on the on the medical growth thing, so there was a. Misunderstanding, if that's that's probably not the right word, but there is not, there was not a full understanding of how the medical growth thing was playing out under state law. And there's been a petition, a position taken, sounds like legally, that a medical grow facility. Is allowed anywhere in South Burbank where agricultural uses are allowed unless unless the town does an ordinance to restrict it. Is that, is that, that the way you're, I can explain this, that so that the town council is saying, we don't want to have this open ended, we want to, we, in order to control that, we have to have an ordinance which locates it?
Yes, yes, and the.
In other words, I'm sorry, in the absence of such an ordinance, there are positions which are maybe prevailing. That would allow a medical grow facility to go anywhere in town as long as agricultural uses are allowed on that property.
That's a, that's a lawyer opinion. I don't believe it's been adjudicated, Joe. Do you, do you have any idea of any court decisions with respect to that question?
I haven't heard of any yet. I mean, I know there's been talk about it, but I haven't heard any cases that have been filed yet.
But but the the motivation of the town and town council in this case is to get out in front of this if if that if that problem does exist.
Well, we we want to be prepared and. Again, you know, I I I asked that question, it's it's just a question Jack had about whether or not. Because it's not mentioned to the law, is it legal? That 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 question and then we have the other question, we haven't discussed this as a council, but I can discuss it with you folks. Be my consideration because we have the language in in section one forty eighteen about omitted uses.
Yeah.
And with that states that if there's an omitted use. It it's it's and it's brought up, it's prohibited.
So seems to me like we ought to have a more time until we figure out what to do.
Well, well, that's that's on the, that's on mainly, that's on the cultivation piece for for medical, medical cultivation. I think the 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 constraint there is where, I believe we did the moratorium on August twenty second. Now is one hundred and eighty days, so that's going to come up in February, I believe, late February. And so we're we're, the council is considering at our next meeting to extend the moratorium to give us more time. And we can do so as long as, you know, we're making active progress in terms of our consideration. And and we're doing that, you know, we've had Southern Maine. Take a crack at a draft, we refer to the planning board, tell us what you think and and just consider some of the things that I've said as far as that goes.
So I do, the the council is is looking at extending, let me get back up. So right now there is a. A moratorium enacted by a town council that prohibited medical grow facilities for one hundred and eighty days, which expires in February.
Yes.
And so that that's coverage for for this issue while it's being played out. So the council is likely to extend or is considering extending that for how much longer?
It would be a second hundred and eighty day extension.
Okay, through July next year or August next year, okay.
It'd be through August. I I think it, Barbara just put a note up about February seventh and that was mentioned, but I believe that's an erroneous date based on, if if I'm correct, on. The moratorium being dated on August twenty second, it would be late.
Okay.
February rather than.
So this will buy everybody time.
And yeah, so it it gives us some 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 wiggle room. But again, we have to be, there is a, I don't want to minimize the sense of urgency, it but it's just a, it's just a way of, you know, me explaining to the folks tonight of what the priority should be.
Okay, so this board, the planning board should take that initial draft ordinance and think about it and report back to you at some time?
Yes, yes, yes. But but I think in terms of getting things done, like you said, the looking at. You know, formulating the recommendation on on the referendum question is probably a higher priority.
Gotcha.
Time wise.
This is probably.
The moratorium for medical grow?
No, no, the moratorium. The moratorium is for the medical grow, yes, yes.
And do we need a moratorium for anything else?
Not right now.
Seems like everything's coming at us fast and furious.
It is, isn't it? All things.
Well, it's a, it's it's a, it's a real challenge. Number one, it's. How do you want to say it? You know, there there's, but there's a, there's a, there's a need for orderly process on this and we need to have, we need to have our our ducks in a row to to work this out. And again, I I'm sorry, I'm really sorry that that you had to go through what you had to go through on the sixth of January.
That's okay.
Because a lot of, a lot of things are being lobbed at you without any perspective on.
A a lot, a lot of really awful things happened on January sixth and this wasn't one of them.
Tough day all around.
So, okay, so I I really appreciate this, I think you provided the clarity that there was so, it was. You know, it's one of these things, you know, you can't can't control what you have to deal with sometimes, you know, and this, all these marijuana issues are state legislation and it's playing out and you can't, there's only so many things you can choose not to deal with. And these are not among them, so.
Yeah, just, and and again, we have to keep working together on it and. You know, it it's, it's unfortunate that, at least in my mind. I I thought simply by referring it to the planning board, it would be self evident on its face what what it would be that you had to do, that clearly wasn't the case.
Yeah.
It's an oversight on my part and an assumption that was a bad assumption. And I think it was the rest of the council's assumption too that.
Well, that that's. That's water over the dam, Jack, and I think we, that's very timely and helpful what you're doing tonight and I appreciate it very much.
Yeah, and and, you know, again, I'd like, there's a lot of members of the public here tonight and I'd like to continue the dialogue as we move along through the process. And 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 we welcome the comments and. Try to do things as as best we can when we can do it.
Okay, it's, time's getting on, well, I'll I'll ask any comments from the public and then we'll go to the board. Yeah, Greg.
Sure, sure, Mr. Schaub, thank you. I have a a couple of questions, one, maybe one really specific question. And then I, in this, I don't know if I'll direct this to you, Bill, or to you, Jack, and and I'll let you folks decide who can answer it.
They can jump all, go ahead.
The first question I have is the planning board recommendation. To whom does it go and to where does it go? You know, I know there was some discussion at the last council meeting about whether or not that can be put on the ballot. I heard a variety of the answers, hopefully that can get cleared up. But does the planning board recommendation go to a file in a filing cabinet or how does the public know about it? Which seems to me would be the importance of having a recommendation on a ballot. So when people are looking like we've done with other ballots in town, what does the planning board recommend or what does the town council recommend? I don't need an answer tonight on that, I just think it's an issue, where does your recommendation go so that people understand what position the planning board is taking? And so I'm not sure where that ends up for public consumption. The other.
I'll answer the question, Greg, and and it's at the plan, it's at the public hearing.
Okay, so they would take a vote.
And 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 it could be done, you know, I don't think the planning board needs to make a a presentation, they can do so if they wish. But it, you know, it could be a simple a letter that could be recited into the record at that point. Or if the planning board chooses to to make a a a larger statement, they could do so. But it's at the, it's at the public hearing.
That that answers the question, thank you.
So if if we bring it up and we make a recommendation to public hearing, but. It seems to me that for the most part, most people don't. Participate in a public hearing, but they will be participating in the voting, so somehow. Whatever a recommendation needs to get to the voters, it seems to me.
I agree with, I agree with Manny.
Greg, you had more.
I just had one other comment here in reference to Mr. Kurekis's comment on wiggle room. So you're going to be getting an ordinance and you're going to have have to review the ordinance for whatever you choose to review it under and performance standards, whatever. Again, we understand, I understand that that agricultural issue and the logic behind trying to gear it into specific districts. However, there's a couple of other interesting things that will need to be considered and and. And and that really is the opt in or opt out regarding cultivation to begin with. It almost seems as if some legal issues need to be worked out before you even start your work on that. So no one's time is wasted. And so it would seem that there are a couple of issues there that Jack referenced and so. I would encourage, maybe I'm not understanding, but I I'm not entirely sure. This opt in, opt out, I completely understand what you're saying, Jack, about the cultivation issue and. In state law, they'll look at it and say, if it's not there, we're going to read the plain language of the law. And if it's not there, it's not allowed. But however, I think what we've seen with this marijuana stuff statewide is it's super confusing. And so that's going to present some challenges to work through, so it really sounds as if some legal issues need to be worked out. To whether or not the growth facility can even move forward and whether or not they should opt in or opt out. But that's just my general understanding of what I'm hearing tonight, so I just hate to see people go through the routine of working out an ordinance and. And I mean, we're here until nine o'clock tonight, we're, you know, talking about this kind of stuff and so. It might help just to know whether or not it could even actually move forward. It's just my two cents, thank you.
Thanks, Greg. Barbara Hopkins?
So I I'm just going to make a broad statement and and it's it's because I'm I'm hearing things and talking to people and some. You have growth. Ordinance, so it's growth, it's cultivation, but then there's also the growth and cultivation that occurs within these huge buildings. That are, you know, you wouldn't think of that as agricultural necessarily, but because it's in this big building, it is. And then there's also the. A whole processing piece, so then it comes under the or the the terminology of manufacturing. And so, you know, all of these twists, if you will, leaves things wide open. And I know some of the concern on what's happening opposite Lord's Lane is like, how do they already have permission to do that? And and I appreciate hearing that, Joe, you brought that forward. But, you know, is it that the people can apply to build some kind of big car garage and then later on convert it? And then my other concern is around. How many, I mean, we've got this approval, the ordinance is in place for the medical. At this point, my understanding is we have three between Fogarty's and what would be the post office. Is there room for a fourth? And is that really, I mean, originally we cited the need that, okay, people had to go to Bedford, but now we have three and could there be a fourth? Is it time for us to look at that ordinance and say, you know what, enough is enough? Let's let's make a change on that ordinance. And I'm just putting it out there because the community is becoming more aware as these facilities are going in. The other piece that I would like to share is that with that house, I looked at it on Google and I saw that originally between that house and the funeral parlor. That big driveway was actually called a court, it was called court something.
Barbara, I'm gonna have to cut you off on that one. We can't talk about specific, your comments are great, but you can't talk about a specific project, we can't talk about.
Oh, okay, all right, sorry.
Yeah, thank you. But general comments are fine, but specific to a case that we're in front of us, that's the law of limits.
Okay.
The best advice I can give Barbara and others on this is to do exactly what we've all had to do since two thousand and eighteen. Is take a look at the law, read the law, understand that it's in two parts and understand that there's different uses. Whether it's sales, cultivation, manufacturing, testing. These are all items that are things that that need to be looked at before we can. Before we can, you know. Allow them in town. And so it's 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 really easy to to lump it all together and like you jump like the three things, Barbara, and it's got, you gotta keep them separate and look back up and see how and ground truth them. And I'm a little bit reluctant right now, I'm going on too much because I could misspeak and add more confusion, so.
Yeah.
It's 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 really important to, like, oh, but she does bring up a good point and this is something else. You know, the, when you, when you, when you're doing indoor grow facilities, one of the things I learned that a, at a little seminar that we went to up at Sanford. It was hosted by Southern Maine Regional Plan and Development Commission was the fact, and and there was a speaker who owned one of the dispensaries and he was creating the logic that. An indoor grow facility is really a light industrial. Use of of that facility and when you compare what we have on the books right now for light industrial. use of of that facility. And when you compare what we have on the books right now for light industrial, of course, that that's probably a thirty or forty year old definition. It refers to things that were going on at that time, which meant, you know, making widgets and and maybe making a stapler or something like that. It didn't, didn't consider this particular type of application, so I think we're, performance standards might lend themselves to a light industrial type of review. Think of air quality, wastewater, all the other things, electricity, all the things that come into play. That, that light industrial definition really needs to get updated.
Is there any other people that in the public that what, like Mary Ann Minard? Mute. You got off mute.
Sorry.
There you go, there you go.
Thank you. I just have one question, and it's about the medical cultivation ordinance proposal. And I know, as I heard you say, Jack, that maybe can take a backseat to getting certainly the vote out on this recreational cultivation piece. However, here's my question. The rumor mill is great, and those of us who look around see that this construction is already started down there on Lord's Lane, and what we hear is it's going to be a twenty thousand foot indoor growing space. And people even know the name of the person who's going to develop that. And I'm just trying to figure out how this is happening without even an ordinance in place, how people can just go on and and begin this, if indeed that's true, Jack, and the role of what the town council has been involved with to this point, that perhaps we haven't been privy to when we see the economic development executive sessions, and I I think there's just some concern, and as I read the new regulations from the state on marijuana, one of the things I'm particularly concerned about is cultivation, where they say recreational and medical can share a production facility. And I think we need to be very cautious and very restrictive, but I'm just interested to know how we got to this point already, that a lot of people in town seem to think and seem to have a lot of facts around it.
Well, first of all, as far as I know, there's been no economic development executive sessions.
Well, there's three been listed.
But it's not on economic development. It's for personnel because we're, the council is considering applications right now for a new town manager. So we're, we're meeting pursuant to that, which are, need to be executive session.
Their executive sessions say economic development?
No, they don't.
Well, there's three of them, I can, I can find them. Okay, all right, so.
Now, now, as far as the construction down on Lord's Lane, and Joe, you might be able to help out with this as well. But it's my understanding that the, that that part of the, the old Shattuck Road is owned on both sides by the person who is improving the road. And they're improving the road on their own nickel because it's a private road.
That is correct. When he purchased the land, he had to build a road, an industrial road, in order to buy the property. So that's what he's doing.
So there's no anticipation on that person's part that he's going to construct this twenty thousand square foot building for indoor medical cultivation?
He has no permits at this time. He is taking us to court on it, and we'll figure it out once the court decides.
Okay.
Can you?
No, I can't speak on it any more than that.
Yeah.
It's a legal matter.
Right. The the appeal to the Z, Zoning Board of Appeals affirmed the code enforcement officer's decision, and the next level of appeal is to Superior Court. I think that that's a fair thing to say, wouldn't you say, Joe?
That is correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. I mean, I think it's important that we all have an understanding of where this is going for for all of us.
Thanks, Steve Baze.
Hi, just super quick, I promise, thank you, Jack, for attending for this. I know some of it was a result of the letter a group of us put together, and I hope the planning board members each had a an opportunity to read that, and certainly the intent was to improve communication, and I hope it was received that way. How do we best get our input to the planning board concerning these ordinances? I know none of the volunteers have town emails and don't necessarily want to use personal ones if if that's not what you prefer as members.
I'll speak to that first. We're gonna have I don't know if it's gonna be a standing item, but there's gonna be a regular item on our agendas dealing with these ordinance issues sequentially. And you're for ordinance discussions, there's much more latitude open to us regarding public discussion at meetings because there's no, there's no, we, we, we can take input from wherever we want to take input from on an ordinance issue. So it's not, it sounds like we have to be more structured as in that when some site plan application comes in. That, that, that's good. And I, I think we, we're, we're gonna need to have our deliberations of one, that what we'll need our, not, we'll need our, I'm saying private times, not privately, public, but we'll need to have our ability to talk amongst ourselves. But I think our goal would be to allow interested parties to come and listen and have reasonable input on that. In terms of communicating positions, I would ask that you send things to Amy and Joe at their South Berwick email addresses. Amy Agar and Joe Russell, and they will distribute them to us.
All right, thank you.
From my point of view, if you ask what you can do with, less is more. And what I mean by that is if you can condense what you're trying to accomplish down to a a smaller amount of words, it would, or myself, would make more of an impact.
So duly noted. Anybody else?
I would, I would just add, Manley, that if you can figure that out, let me know, because I have a hard time not running on.
Any, any comments from the board members or questions of Jack? The time's getting way on here, but we're, we're doing good. Any other comments from interested parties that are visiting tonight? Hearing none?
Oh, hang on, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
I was, I was on mute. I just want to quickly, you know, people coming to the planning board meetings to talk about ordinances to me doesn't really seem can, can you help me understand, like, how it's, it's a a useful conversation for us when we don't do, we don't deal with the creating and changing of ordinances?
We can, we have the ability at our choice to recommend to the town council on any ordinance that we want to. So we don't need to be invited necessarily to do that. However, it, for it to be a, a useful use of our time, it's probably a good idea to let the council know what we're thinking about and 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 get some thought about whether they'll entertain it or not, so that there's a, there's a balance. We, we can, if we, we can responsibly propose any, any ordinance change we want on land use, if we want to.
Okay.
But it's, it's, it's a, it's a judgment as to how fruitful it would be.
Yeah, it's always, Betsy, it's always good to ask this question on anything that we deliberate on, and that's, you know, what's the authority that that we have to hear a case or to do anything like that? And I'd refer you to also to one forty dash six amendment. And and that, that lays out, you know, an amendment to this chapter may be initiated by the planning board, provided that a majority of the board has so voted.
Right.
Well, you have that statutory authority in the book.
Okay.
And so it's always good.
I, I've been on the board for what's that, twelve, thirteen years now, and we've done, we've done a fair number of ordinance changes. Some housekeeping, some substantial, we established the BR district years ago. So we've done some serious ordinance work over the years, and we can choose to take up issues now if we want to. It's a matter of consensus of the board. Hershey?
And and if it gets down to a budget topic, you know, where you might need to get outside consultants or whatever, you know, research needs to be done, and and it exceeds the, the line items that we have in the budget, that's when, you know, through, through staff, you'd, you know, let the manager and the council know that there needs to be a subsequent appropriation of funds. And that, that's, as far as I know, that's never been denied.
No, it's never, it's actually never been, I can't remember asking for it, and it's certainly been reported by, by managers and councils all along.
Sure.
Hershey?
I was just hoping we could establish a timeline, since time seems to be of the essence. So in two weeks, we'll have a meeting, it will be on the agenda to discuss the petition ordinance, yeah?
I think my, thinking about it, behind the scenes here, it's like, I think what I would like to do is to establish a plan in two weeks. How we, how, what topics we take up, how we break it apart, and at that time, establish a plan and a schedule for doing that. And we do that deliberately with it, with it, when we got clear heads. And so we, the first, the first, the first time we have it on the agenda, my objective would be to set goals and time, timeframes for action.
Great, that sounds great, thanks, Ben.
Jack? That was very clarifying, and I, we all appreciate it very much, and at such time as we get balled up again, we may ask to do this again, but this is, this is.
We really need to talk more, and communications is always the.
Always a thing.
Always a thing, and to answer that, and actually, I, I got to listen to your deliberations on the subdivision up there, the R five, and I was very pleasantly I enjoyed listening to the deliberations, particularly, you know, with respect to cluster and all those sorts of things that we, we've worked on over, you know, since nineteen eighty four. And so it's, it was, it was great to hear a recitation of all those elements that were very accurate, as far as I could see.
Great, thank you, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, um, we have one more item on our discussion list, but I'm gonna propose, since the folks from Pumpkin Town Place are not here, and we've gone on for almost three hours now. We take this up next time. Manley's made the motion. Second from Betsy. All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks very much, productive meeting, thank you very much.